All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 1 Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, Community Development Subcommittee Meeting. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as it is.
All right. So I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, members of the public first and foremost, township staff. We have fellow commissioners, Matt Marshall and Sean Farhi, and we also have representatives from Penn here. The sole purpose of this meeting is to discuss the development plans for 145 King of Prussia Road. Okay? So we're going to go through those. We're going to have a presentation from Penn. We're going to listen to what they have to say. There are no decisions made tonight. It is strictly informational, and we will be telling them what we think of the plans, any waivers requested, any upgrades or anything or improvements that we're requesting. And I do especially want to give Commissioner Booker the time to go through his points and his issues with these plans. He knows them up and down, and I also am glad that Matt Marshall is here as well, given his professional expertise, I think he can help out a lot here. So with that being said, and I want to thank, of course, Commissioners Booker and Barowski for being here as well. So with that being said, unless Rich, Lisa, unless you have anything you want to say or any issues, I was going to have Penn present, we'll go from there.
Well, let me just say, I wanted to just provide a little bit of context for this meeting. I think this is the first community development subcommittee meeting we've had. I don't remember another one, but you know, but there could have been. They don't happen that often. And I think it's particularly important to have this because there simply is not the time to have in-depth review of these plans during the regular board meeting and the regular caucus. Anybody who follows the Board of Commissioners would recognize that on, at our last meeting on the 22nd, I believe, we finally got to this issue for caucus. It was after 11 o'clock, and really is not enough time to review a 475,000 square-foot multi-use comprehensive land development plan and the traffic and surrounding issues in just that short period of time for caucus. So this subcommittee meeting was convened for that purpose, and we will take the time we need to go through these items and focus on some of the technical issues. So I appreciate everyone being in here and participating and the exchange of the ideas, concerns, and solutions to bring about the least intrusive plan that can be achieved.
Thank you. And I also want to thank representatives from the school district who are here. I know Mr. Caneli is here, Vice President Stern, President Solomon, thanks for coming as well. And we will be trying to convene subcommittee meetings as these major developments or these major issues come along, because Rich is right, these are things that should be done in this setting as opposed to on the normal agenda where we're getting to them at 10, 11 o'clock at night. That doesn't make any sense. So we are going to try to do more of these for these major issues.
Well, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say that, but in this instance, this is an opportunity, I think, to provide the time that we need. And I think in general, the more that we do in our regular meetings, the better, but it doesn't always lend itself to that.
All right. With that, Mr. Falcone.
Thanks. Dave Falcone here on behalf of the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania. I'll wait just a minute here, and then I'll turn it over to the consultants. We're happy to be here. We completely agree that having a dedicated night to go through these plans is important. So we think this is a great use of time, and our consultants are here to go through the review letters that we've gotten from your consultants as well as any questions that you might have. I will just lead with, since we've last been to the board, we've gone back, as we said we would, to evaluate the plans, and my consultants will explain tonight, but we are really down to one waiver request, which is the size of the plans. If that is not acceptable to the board, we can certainly, we can certainly provide you the plans that you want. If you are happy with larger plans, we would keep the waiver, but if you would like smaller plans, we will eliminate the waiver. Other than that, I think I would just, I'll first turn it over to Mike Kissinger with Panone, and then Jim Markham with Panone. Mike is our civil on the project, so he can give you a pretty good overview of the overall plan, though I know most of the questions have to do with traffic, and I think then we'll get to Jim. But as of right now, that's just kind of an aside as to where we are. We're down just to the one waiver on the traffic size, or the plan size. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as Dave mentioned, my name is Mike Kissinger with Panone, and this is Jim Markham with Panone. I do more of the site stuff, and Jim is traffic. So we can orient yourself to the property. I think everyone here knows where we are and everything, but on the board here, we're just pointing to 145 King of Prussia Road. We've blown this plan out, so that way we can see the surrounding area and really put it into context. But as Dave mentioned, you know, what we were planning to do here tonight is to go over the review letters and our waivers, and we are very happy to report that really we feel that we're down to one waiver, which is plan size. We can discuss how we're going to address the other two that we had previously requested, one of which is this actual plan. So we had requested a waiver for 500 feet, a survey within 500 feet. We've provided it. So what we've done is taken all the contours and done the existing features for everything within 500 feet on this plan. We left the aerial on so that everyone can see what it is, but in the plan set, it'll be a black and white version that will meet the requirements of that section of code. So if you guys are okay, what I'll do is start to go through the Panone response letter that's dated January 17th, and we'll just, we'll make our way through. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Starting with the Gannett Fleming letter dated November 28th, we have, comment number one was about sewage facilities planning. We've actually been working with township staff on that one for a considerable amount of time and working with the DEP as well. So we see no issues with that, and something that will be addressed before final plans.
Is there any material on that? I think that some of the constituents do see an issue. We generally have a huge issue with the capacity in our sewer for the township. So this will be a major issue because it's zero effluent from the site at this point.
This site is currently permitted for the industrial waste, which was the previous uses. So the biomed plans, as well as this development, are a significant reduction to the permitted waste on this property already. So the previous uses are still in the DEP books and still in the records. So our flow being substantially less is going down its road. The DEP has signed off on our flow, and we've moved through that.
Is there any documentation? I haven't seen anything at all on that, and it's actually less?
Yes.
I'm surprised it would be less than Wyeth. So I would like to see some documentation on what anticipated flows are.
All of that documentation was submitted with our various applications to the township and reviewed by your consultants and township staff.
I don't think it's come to the Board of Commissioners, so if we could make that available, Kevin, or Steve, or Bob, I would like to take a look at that.
Yes, sir. We will make that available to the board. It'll be in your packet for the next Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thanks, Steve.
As a pharmaceutical plant, it generated hundreds of thousands of gallons of flow. And so that's why, you know, this use is significantly less than that.
Basically, since very little's coming, even though very little's coming out of it right now, obviously, when you're fully developed, more's going to be coming out of it. It's still not going to reach the level of
The previous approvals.
Of what was there previously and what's permitted?
Correct.
Okay.
But the issue for the sewer authority right now is that we have a capacity issue as it stands today because of the infiltration and inflow. I heard from one of the people, it was secondhand, that the treatment plant that we work with in our joint municipal authority, sewer authority, that the sewer plant believes that it's four to one, I and I versus our sewer flow, and that there's a capacity issue. So notwithstanding that the capacity is, it might be less than what Wyeth was delivering in 2002, all of the other people and all of the infiltration and inflow has caused us to be righted to what they can take. So I'm surprised that it wouldn't be an issue based on that.
Is it going to lower Marion, or is it going to, are the sewer system that we share?
Goes to the RHM line.
Jim, yeah, yeah. And that's a capacity, even though I hear that you already are permitted, it's less, but it's zero today, and we're at capacity. So that was my question.
Yeah, and I think that we would, we'll get you those documents, that you can review them, but I assure you that my understanding of the RHM line would take this much farther into the weeds, but the bottom line is, we've worked with the DEP, we work with consultant, the staff, and we'll provide that approval prior to final land development approval. Number one under zoning is parking structure when constructed for an accessory use needs to depict where surface parking could exist that we've eliminated. We prepared this sketch, which is Exhibit 24, which shows that area, which could be used for a parking lot adjacent here in our green, and we would agree to have that lot remain grass and lawn as it relates to the parking garage.
So, and thank you for raising these issues, because I don't have on my list. This issue is parking structures are permitted to the extent that otherwise allowable surface parking is removed. The concept being one-for-one. That's always been the interpretation. One space, so if you remove 1,000 spaces, you can put that 1,000 spaces in a parking structure. Is this what we have here, one-for-one, or is that a different interpretation that you're taking on this case?
Yes, we're actually taking the township's interpretation, maybe not yours. I think there was a review letter issued by John Rice's office with the previous development, and so that's what we're basing this plan on. So when we added this parking, it was submitted, reviewed by your consultant, and deemed to comply with the language in your ordinance.
Well, John Rice, you may know, had issued two opinions on that very issue.
Absolutely.
And both, each were 180 degrees opposite of the other. So I think John's first opinion was correct, it was one-for-one, but you're complying with the second one, is what you're saying.
Which is what ultimately was on the plan before we acquired the property.
So how many surface spots are being removed relative to how many spots are being included in parking structures? Do you have a ratio, or do you have a count?
We're providing about 40, 43, 44 in that area. The parking garages, the two garages, as we show, are about 1,800 cars, 1,850.
Well, all right. So, you know, just for our fellow commissioners and others, this was the issue, we have, when we say otherwise allowable surface parking, the concept has always been that if you remove 1,000 spaces from surface parking, you get all the green space, you can put that in a parking structure. And here, it sounds like we're getting 46, we're removing 46 from the paving, and then we're putting in 2,000 in a structure.
So we just, we're following the solicitor's interpretation. I think we could probably look to them as to whether or not this complies in your zoning officer. We're just following, you know, the code. As we were told, it was to be interpreted. So that's what we show on the plan. It's not some, we didn't create this interpretation. We're following the previous plan that came before us and the interpretations that were a part of that application. Well, you're absolutely correct, Rich. There were two at that point, but the last one, which was part of the plan that was moved forward for resolution, did show a very similar parking reduction to the garage. We will note also, we are not seeking any relief from your building or impervious coverage calculations. We're meeting all of those, and we'll meet all your stormwater as well.
So, you know, again, the concept was that you would be far exceeding our green space requirement if you were eliminating that much pavement of 1,800 surface spots. So I do agree with you, though. This wasn't Penn, this is Penn, following what they were told. So I guess Peter is the only one who's here. Do you want to vouch for John's opinion that 46, otherwise allowable means 46 and 1,800?
Yeah, I believe all the consultants, as well as the zoning officer, have agreed that this is a proper interpretation.
Well, Dave's right. I disagree with that. Otherwise allowable should be one-for-one, and the plan and commission made that point, and we should have gotten that into this ordinance. Okay, all right, next.
So the next one is, the closest distance between any two buildings shall be 45 feet. The plan complies. The line that was noted is, we added a dimension, these two buildings are 45 feet apart. Number three, zoning table to clearly indicate the area of each building.
Mike, I'm just making sure this is what they want, what we're doing here. So is this what, are we making good productive use of this?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. This is, yeah.
I'll get some steam here. We'll go, we'll go through them a lot faster.
There's a lot here, so.
Yeah, exactly. So building coverage, basically, we've provided the chart on the right-hand side to comply with that comment. And number four, parking structure height, we've adjusted the parking structure height to match the code requirement in number four. Number five talks about the greatest dimension and depth of any building, and up to 350 feet. We, the facade, so basically what we're doing here is, we're talking about the architecture. So while on the plan, you see some straighter lines, the renderings that we've depicted to the board show that we comply with this. So in the next submission, we will include the architectural renderings with the plans. Number six talks about the mixed-use development, shall submit a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study was submitted and reviewed and resubmitted, and I'll let Jim talk about that later. Service, utility, maintenance, and storage areas, including solid waste containers and unheated, unloading areas shall be screened. They are all screened, and during a recent meeting we actually had with Mr. Goodman, you know, we realized, and I apologize, I'm floating through some slides here, but you can see some of the buffering that we've provided, and specifically, this line over here with Mr. Goodman. So we have addressed that comment. Parking calculations shall be provided to depict the hotel. Previously, we had, we had just basically said 475,000 square feet, mixed use, and come up with a number. We broke out the hotel use and provided that on the plans as well. Steep slopes shall be, containing slopes greater than 14 shall be outlined on the plans. They are outlined on the plans, and you can see them in that, the hatched areas on those plans.
Now, on those slopes, do you have any evidence that those steep slopes had been subject to a grading plan and actually graded in the past, or are these indigenous or steep slopes that cannot be moved?
They're man-made slopes. A large portion of them are on the right-hand side, which is an obvious man-made basin, with that vicinity on the side there, and also with the generator court in the previous development. As King of Prussia Road has developed, we've continued to make these, to get these steep slopes in the parking lot construction. So we've looked through historic aerials and USGSs to prove that, yes, these are not, these are man-made slopes.
Do you have any building permit applications that show grading in those areas that would document that those have been the subject of Radnor and a grading permit for man-made slopes?
We do not have building permits, but I think we do have proof that they were Moving into SADO sections.
Can we get that, so we need to get, again, that's another issue. This is a constituent issue. I haven't seen anything man-made. If it's, if they say it's man-made slopes, we don't have a permit, we need to see what that is.
Commissioner Booker, I don't know that when Wyeth was constructed, that a grading permit, I don't know if they were issued back at that time. Perhaps we might have to just research to find a set of plans that was approved for the Wyeth development. That might be the only method to do that.
All right. You can just put a tickler, so, because that, this is something that people ask me about, so I can't let it go. We need to have something that we can respond.
Number one under the SADO is the survey plan showing existing features within 500 feet. And again, so we were previously requesting a waiver of this, and what we have done is added this aerial plan to the, to the set. The one we were looking at before, I'll pull that open. So what we've done is added survey data within the 500 feet and no longer require that waiver. Final, so this waiver we still do need. Final plan shall be a minimum, have a minimum size of 18 inches by 30 and a maximum size of 24 inch by 34 inches. All plans shall be legible. So essentially, what we have is a very large site that
I don't think we're concerned about the size of the plans themselves.
Again, as long as, you know, it's easier for everybody to have the bigger plans, as long as you reduce them for Delaware County. I mean, it's better when a big site to have bigger plans.
Thank you. The number three, King of Prussia Road is designated as a major collector and a required right-of-way of 80 feet, cartway of 48 feet. The ultimate right-of-way on the plans shown is 65 feet. The ultimate right-of-way on the plans is actually shown at 80. It's a 40-foot half width. So that's what the confusion was. But so our half of, from the center line of the road to into our site was 40, so we do comply with that section. Going down to number four, additional right-of-way and cart widths may be required by the commissioners. And so this gets into, I think, Mr. Markham's expertise, or do you want to skip and keep me going? How do you guys want to do it?
Let's keep, yeah, let's keep you going, and then we'll move on.
And are you going to talk about the nine-acre area that is
Sure, I can do that now.
Subject to Pen dot. So my question is, on the nine-acre that's under I-476, that, is that included in your calculation of green space and thereby increasing your buildable area, or is that excluded from your green space calculation?
It is excluded. So if you look here, this portion of the chart on the plan is actually underneath the chart, but basically, it gives you the calculations on how we did it, and you'll note in there that it is based on 18.71 acres. 18.71 acres is the, is what you see there on the parcel. So I'll outline that 18, down to the right-of-way, up and around here. That portion of the site does not pummel play with that, with those calculations. Keep going here on, I think we're on page three, so gotta make some headway here. Entrance on the Septa Drive, basically, being widened to 25 feet. We do comply with that now. So it's an existing 20-foot road, we're widening to 25. Number six, no radius shall be less than five feet. We have, we missed one right here in the middle of the property that we fixed, and so there will be none less than that. Number seven, parking areas shall have trees. We've revised that accordingly as well, so the revised landscape plans have been provided. And again, just for a feel of what that looks like, I want you to the rendering there. Okay. Sidewalks and pedestrian paths shall be lighted if required by the board. We've talked a lot about it in the different meetings about sidewalks and pathways, and we await your opinion on the lighting. This came up, I guess, the other night as well. So this sidewalk here, and then we have a path through the site there. The rest of the site will be adequately lit per code. That comment specifically talks about those two trails, and I think that we can adequately light them. Number 10 comes down to street trees again, and that's a will comply with the landscape plan, which is shown on this plan and reviewed by your consultants. Number 11 is a previous comment from the zoning, but outdoor collection area shall be screened, and that is a will comply. Number 12 talks about a fee in lieu of for recreation, recreation area, and that's a will comply. Number 13 talks about a central water system, adequately spaced for fire hydrants. We have added fire hydrants to the plan, and we will meet with your fire marshal to make sure that they're adequate. Oh, you need that one, right? Hold on to yours. That one there. Okay. Number one on page five, sanitary sewers is being provided to the hotel, just review the services. It's a will comply. We had a sanitary sewer line going up to the garage. It is purely for elevators and things like that. It's a placeholder. It can be, it can be coordinated in the future. Profiles on number two are typically done during final land development, and that's when we will comply. Plans will show a connection to a sewer line here in King of Prussia Road. We had showed, we had shown connecting into an existing line to keep King of Prussia Road open, so, to not open King of Prussia Road. Will comply with whatever the township needs. We show it being replaced, since we are now doing so much work in King of Prussia Road anyway. The, number four talks about, is a note change on the plans, and we'll do that. Stormwater comments are all clerical that we've revised in our reports.
On stormwater, last I heard, that there had not been perk tests on, and there was not, Biomed never completed the stormwater module and showed that the stormwater was going to be adequate. So you did the work, or what's the status of that?
Yes. So what we did is, we did downhole infiltration tests. We did various of them through the site, which is typical, and we did those probably in the fall. We designed a full stormwater system that, in my opinion, exceeds your code, and we've had that reviewed by your staff and your consultants. There are some minor clerical things. We do need to do additional infiltration tests. However, there's no reason to believe that we're going to have any issues based on the test that we have already done.
What's the scope of the additional infiltration that needs to be done, and why, why was that, was it missed, or was it a change in scope, or what caused it?
It's part of the typical process. So what you do is, you design your, you get some concept-level infiltration tests, you do the detailed design, you find out what level it is. The county requires you to be at the exact elevation, so you need to have it fully designed before you can do those tests to comply. So it's just part of the process, and it's normal.
So basically, you did some, and then you refined the design and had to revise your stormwater to comply, so that you're testing at the locations per the latest designs?
Correct.
Okay.
So that, if you guys are okay, that'll take us to general, which is new deeds to be, deed number one, new deeds to be prepared and recorded in Delaware County Courthouse. Obviously, we will do that. And the reason for that comment is, again, we were talking earlier about the right-hand side of this parcel. You can see it's actually a separate parcel. So it will be combined with the rest of the property as part of this development.
Here's a question for Dave, or what, are you going to main, are the University of Trustees, are the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania going to maintain the current structure of this property, which is held in partnership solution, or are they going to dissolve that partnership and just hold it directly? Is there a plan for that? And is that other parcel a part of the partnership, or is that separate?
It's actually parcel, let's say, .1 and 0. It's the same deed. If you read the deed, it's just two premises on one deed.
And the deed is to 145 BMR. So Penn is going to continue to own that entity, or are they going to dissolve that entity?
I don't have any idea, Rich. So I guess we could find that out. You want to know whether or not the ownership structure will change on the property once the land development is, or if the land development is
I think it's helpful, because when you're recording, nobody knows to look for 145 BMR, right, for this site. If you're looking, if you're providing a notice provision and you're recording it, it's helpful that you have some reference to the University of Pennsylvania trustees, because it provides a better notice, so people can see what's there.
I can find that out. That's information I can get to. I'll email it to staff, and they can pass it to you.
We're going through them pretty fast now. So Radnor Township Tree Protection Detail is added to the landscape plans, and it's on the Panone plans as well. Number three, lighting details, lighting details are on the plans, and height of retaining walls must be indicated on the plans. Our grading plan shows a top and bottom of wall of each one of those walls, so that detail is there. And detailed parking structure plans will be provided during building permits and final land be provided during building permits and final land development approvals. So that's just a, again, a typical one. Let's see here. We go, now we'll go into the Gilmore letter dated November 29th of 2017. A lot of these are the same, so I'll try to pinpoint through them as well. Number one is, again, the same waiver for 500 feet outside of the property boundaries, which we no longer need a waiver for. Number two talks about coordinating with SEPTA to revise the plan, so coordinate an ADA accessible connection from the proposed onsite sidewalk to existing SEPTA facilities. So we do comply with this, and we've provided, again, the SEPTA facilities on the left-hand side. We have ADA sidewalks, compliant sidewalks throughout that vicinity of the site.
So in light of the fact that those other buildings are not slated for construction immediately, is that, that's all going to be built, or is that going to remain undeveloped until those left-hand buildings are done?
We're going to provide access in whatever situation happens. I guess, try to put that a different way. The SEPTA road's going to be widened. We're going to obviously meet that. We're going to put in that sidewalk along the SEPTA road, and we will provide ADA access if it's needed temporarily. We will absolutely do that.
Well, it looks to me like you're going to need to build that, what you just pointed to, going from SEPTA over to that building, that is going to be there, right? And so it looks like you're going to need to do that, because otherwise, these, those other buildings...
Yeah.
Those other buildings won't be developed, and, and so you typically, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't tie that to your, to the building that is developed.
The bottom line is, we will absolutely have an ADA accessible path to that, that corner of the site. This existing lot is there today. Whether or not it's, that parking lot remains with a sidewalk around the perimeter with those access points. Either way, we will comply. The, number three talks about plan size again, and number four, I think, really kicks us in the gym, right? Center line and road widths?
Yeah.
Okay?
So we did skip one comment from Roger's letter that was more transportation-related. That's back on page three. That's very closely related to page, number four, that we're, that we were just talking about. But basically, it has to do with the widening on the road. So I think that comment's similar enough to the one, number four, on page seven. If we just stick with that one, we cover them both. So number four on page seven, this is from the Gilmore letter, basically says, King of Prussia is identified as a major collector, talks about the cartway width and the, and the right-of-way width, which Mike already addressed. Basically, we've gone back and forth with township staff quite a bit about the widening along the frontage, and we've concluded that we will widen all along the frontage, actually past the frontage to the south, to provide a second through lane from Lancaster Avenue up to Raider Road. So this original comment said, for the whole width of the site, feel like it's a better design and solution to have it up to Raider Road. The right-of-way will be there on the other part of the site, but the actual widening of the cartway is up to Raider Road.
So wait a second. So this is two lanes each way? Is that, or just on your side?
No, just northbound.
Just on your side?
Yes.
And up to Raider Road, you said?
Yeah, so I will go through the letter. It might, it might help to jump to some of the conclusions of the traffic study, so you know what we're talking about in, in responding to the letter.
Fair enough.
Basically, we're proposing some roadway improvements to address some of the traffic conditions. And, Mike, can you get the, get the plan up here?
Sorry, plan?
Yeah, well, the one that has the...
There you go.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
So what we were just talking about is the widening on King of Prussia Road. That's a major component of the improvements. As it is now today, there are two lanes as you exit Lancaster Ave, northbound, but they're very short. So as part of our gathering traffic data, we noticed that the two left turn hand, turn lanes, one lane is favored over the other, because there's a, we think it's because there's a very short room to merge. So that will be helped by widening and providing a much longer dual left, or two northbound lanes up to Raider Road, where it turns into a dedicated right turn lane into the site. So all the right turns are out of the through movement. So that's the widening proposed along the site. The additional improve, the additional, the additional improvements include a signal at the main driveway and Raider Road. At Lancaster Avenue in King of Prussia, there's, right now, if you come off the Blue Route, there is a single through lane to the north and a dedicated right turn lane. We were proposing to change that dedicated right turn lane to a dedic, through, a shared through right, so you could take advantage of those two receiving lanes on King of Prussia Road, so two cars could come through at the time. You know, subsequent to this January 17 submission, I've been talking it over with Amy about the possibility of exploring with PennDOT having actually enough room to re-stripe for two dedicated through lanes and a right turn lane. I'm concerned PennDOT might have some concerns with that, but we're certainly going to explore it. Either way...
The through lane is for, where's, where's it going? Which way, going northbound to...
Northbound, yes.
From, from King of Prussia to Lancaster Avenue?
Front, no, northbound from the Blue Route exit ramps, right? Right? So right now, there's a single through lane?
That goes, so you go, if you're going straight on a King of, you get that. So now you have two, two going straight across Lancaster onto King of Prussia Road. So that, that facilitates people coming from northbound on, on the Blue Route, that gets more people onto the site, coming off of the Blue Route.
That's correct. Yep.
Can we switch to the table?
Switch to the table? He wants to switch to the table, to the overhead cameras. Is he back there? Who, what's, what's his name back there? Ian? Ian, thank you. Right.
Okay.
No, but I have this. Sorry. What's his name? Peter?
Ian.
Ian, sorry, Ian. We'll go back to the other. Keep you on your toes.
No, I, I, I understand. I understand. So does that mean you have to widen that? Does that have to be widened there, coming off of that?
Because of the bridge structure, I don't think you can do anything with widening. That's why we're contemplating what the different striping options are. And if you notice, there's a, a no man's land in between the left turn lane and the through lane. We're going to explore taking advantage of that to see if we can't get two through lanes and a dedicated right. I think there's going to be an issue with how that lines up across the street that PennDOT's going to have. But regardless, we know we can get a single dedicated through lane and a shared through right, so you can still increase the through movement at this intersection and take advantage of the widening we're doing on King of Prussia Road.
The other comment I would make is, King of Prussia Road exiting onto Lancaster Avenue, going eastbound, where you talked about you're, you're extending and you're going to have these two, the two left-hand turn lanes. The issue with the left-hand turn is, most people are going onto the Blue Route, and it's very hard, when you're on the right-hand side, to get in and get under the bridge to make the left-hand turn to get onto the, onto the on-ramp. I think that that's why people don't use that right-hand, left-hand turn lane, because, because it's, it's a big swing to get in and then to get under the bridge and on the, on the, on the Blue Route northbound. So is there anything being done for that, or is it just going to be in the exact same place?
This right, outer, the outer right, outer left-hand turn.
No, I'm sorry. Right. I was referring to the dual left turn from Lancaster Avenue to King of Prussia.
To King of Prussia, okay.
These two here.
Those two, all right.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, so the, the northbound additional through lane...
It's the same thing. People are taking a left. They hate to be in the right-hand turn, to take a left and, and to be parallel, you know, and, and as you said, there's only one lane for, it's very short onto that, so...
It stops right there.
Yeah, so...
And now it won't. It'll proceed on.
So now it's about 1,100 feet. I mean, proposed, it'll be about 1,100 feet. Then finally, the, the last traffic improvement of note is, we are agreeing to partner with the township to, to facilitate 14 adaptive signals. I have the list. I can share it with you. It's in the traffic study. It's in...
So before he goes through the list, I'll note kind of what we mean by partnership. There are grants out there that allow for the state to contribute to these intersection improvements. We will, we will pursue those grants. If the grants are not available or are denied, Penn will pay the entire cost of these improvements. So when we say partnership, it's because the township will submit for the grant. We will cover any monetary cost there. If they're denied or not available, Penn will pay the entire cost of the improvement. But that's why it's worded that way.
I would say you should change the language there to reflect what you're saying, because I, I don't hear it, I don't read it the way you're reading it.
Sure, we can change the language.
And, and partnering generally with the grants, as you know, we only pay a portion of, the, the state only pays a portion of the...
You look for a match.
So there, so if, whatever, there's usually a match or some component. So when you say partner, does that mean you're going to pay half of half that we have, or is it, or you're going to pay the whole piece that's not covered?
Saying the township will not have to come out of pocket for anything with, related to these improvements.
Again, I recommend we change the language to...
That sounds great.
To make, to make that expressly clear.
That sounds great.
Okay, so that's the, that's the extent of the proposed transportation improvements. That's essentially the conclusion of the traffic study. So when we go through the comments, remember, this is replying to the previous submission of the traffic study. We've revised it based on these comments and have those, those improvements proposed as part of it. So that context is kind of helpful as we go through the, the remaining comments. Are we good?
Yeah, and I may have missed it. I know a couple residents have asked about a slip ramp off of 476. Is that feasible? Is that, what's, what, what goes into that? And I understand that that's probably a big deal, but...
A dedicated exit from 476 to your building.
We have not explored that. Panoni has done a lot of exit studies. It, it's a point-of-access study that has to be done with the Federal Highway Administration, and it has to do with how close are other exits and entrances that already exist on the Blue Route, given the proximity. I'm very doubtful that that would ever be approved by Federal Highway Administration, but, but we haven't explored it, is the, the short answer.
Biomed looked at that, and they claimed that it couldn't be done because of elevations. It was too, too great an elevation and too short a distance.
Mr. Chairman?
Panoni should look at it again.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to dovetail on what Commissioner Booker had said, Biomed did look at that. Their comment was that there wasn't enough distance between the interchange coming off of 76 to 476. There was enough room under the bridge. There was access. There was enough with the lane to be able to put the slip ramp in. The issue they had, the only issue was, is there wasn't enough distance between the exit at Lancaster Avenue and the distance there. So that would have to be something that'd have to be worked out through PennDOT. But there was enough distance. There was enough bridge clearance there to actually make the slip ramp work. But again, too, is that's the interpretation. Biomed didn't take it any further. So that would be one that could be, would, would be looked at, and I think Commissioner Booker would like to see that looked at, and probably the board to be looked at and considered. So that was the final, and that's where Biomed walked away from. It would be the distance. So, but I, I think that would be, that's the issue.
I think it's worth it.
The Federal Highway Administration, that's one, because there are rules there for safety issues, but that would be one to probably revisit the study that they did.
It's, it's worth it to document it. If, if it can't be done, then it's worth it to document why it can't be done.
I agree, and I think that, that probably, we can look at that, because I think they opined on that, and I think there's, pretty much, we can do that. And I'll ask, if I can, I'll ask Steve just to, if you can reach out on that, because I think that we've got that, but for, I know that's a, a very legitimate concern on the commissioner's part there to be able to take a look at that.
Because I never saw what their, I never saw any documentation of it, so it would be helpful, just so when people call, "Why didn't you put a ramp in there straight to", you know, "At least you have something you can show them."
I agree. That was something that we just was presented to the board. I don't think we actually had documentation, so it'd be good for us to actually see that. So, thank you.
So I'm sorry, you, you do have documentation we can look at?
It was reported to us that they went through that, the Federal Highway Transportation Administration, and PennDOT reviewed that, and they said it would not work because of the distances. So that's why I'll have Steve reach out to PennDOT. We should be able to get that information. And if it's, if it's not, then we'll have that. So we will, we will actually make that reach out tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll investigate that, sir.
Thank you.
So we good? Want to go through the comments? Okay. So we're at number four, that talked about the widening. I think I just described the widening we're anticipating. Number five, sidewalks will be provided along the entire site frontage.
I guess the main question with this is, what are we doing with the other trail that's supposed to be on the other side? That, we had the trail people in, in the school district, and I heard a bunch of different stories. So where are we on the trail, and what side is it going to be? And is there going to be a, a new trail on the school district side, and a new sidewalk on the other side of the road, or what's going to happen?
I can take that, Commissioner. So currently, our consultant, Simone Condon, specifically Peter Simone, the lead, he is moving forward on what was the approved tap-trail route in our comprehensive study. The board approved in 14, and he's going to move forward on that, subsequent to that, or concurrent with that, I should say. We're going, we are going to evaluate if the possibility exists to be able to use the 145 King of Prussia proposed sidewalk as part of that.
So that would mean that you would not install the piece that would be on the bottom edge of this drawing that he's showing right there, right? So the tap-trail went all along on the other side of King of Prussia Road from this site?
Correct. So our consultant advises, since, through the, we have three grants for this project, and at this stage, with the design in preliminary form, but basically where it has always shown to be, is that we move forward with that while investigating the ability to possibly use the proposed sidewalk that the applicant's putting forth. So we'll, we'll follow both operations, because there's implications for the grant as well as the design. So the tap-trail design requirements are very different from the sidewalk that an applicant would put in. So all that has to be evaluated, which we will do while this process moves forward.
All right. And the other thing with that, Steve, is we had committed to the tap-trail to keep it free of snow, so obviously, we wouldn't have, we'd be relieved from that requirement, and Penn would have that if we moved it onto their property, correct?
If I had a vote, I would vote for that, sir.
That's, that's how I would see it.
Sidewalks on our, sidewalks on our property are being maintained by our, by, by Penn.
Sounds good.
So you want to describe the sidewalk to me?
Yeah. I, I just don't know which she is, which in your... So regarding the overall trail project, we realize there's a bigger discussion about that. Our, the trustees have mentioned they're open to the idea of piece of it being along what we're proposing for pedestrian access anyway. How that all gets resolved, there's a lot of moving parts. But we're totally open to it. We're proposing sidewalk anyway. And if you follow the, this picture here, the sidewalk is proposed all along the frontage, right along the road of King of Prussia Road, between the SEPTA driveway and our main driveway slash Raider Road. Here, there's no connection to Lancaster Avenue, but we are proposing a connection here. That's one of the requirements we agreed to. So we thought that it made more sense for the sidewalk to meander through the site. It's easier to make it ADA compliant because of the slopes. And if it were along the road, we did the study, it'd be a major retaining wall to have the sidewalk to where no one's going anyway. So the sidewalk peels away from the road to better accommodate the slopes and just make it a better walking experience.
Now, on this drawing right here, you mentioned in the prior comments...
Yes.
Amy had originally suggested widening the entire length of the frontage of the property, which would include widening where it says the words, "King of Prussia Road", and you decided that you're not going to do that. So why was, why... So why was, why are we not doing the widening the whole length there?
Yeah, well, that comment came from the original Biomed plan, I believe, so it was carried forward to this, because we committed to doing those. But we, in looking at it, think it's better to terminate the widening at our site driveway. The reason being, it's twofold. One, the traffic into the site, 10% is making the right turn at the SEPTA driveway, right? So 75% of the traffic is entering in the main driveway, it's where most of the traffic is going. So that's where the need is. In addition, if we made another through lane, made it a shared through, you'd just be pushing more traffic through that signal quicker. And what would happen is queues that might happen here, and if a northbound queue happened at Raider Road, it would only block our southern driveway, which is just a delivery driveway. If we pushed more through traffic here, the queues would then start to develop up at Radnor Chester Road. And that queue would start to block other existing functioning driveways. So we think for two reasons. One, the widening on the southern half of the site serves the need. And two, putting in the additional widening just causes another problem upstream that we don't need to cause. So that was sort of the logic between terminating it here. One more point, Commissioner. That said, we are dedicating the right-of-way for that improvement, if it ever needs to happen. We think if it happens, it should be part of a more comprehensive widening along King of Prussia Road, that just putting it up to the northern driveway, the SEPTA driveway, doesn't accomplish much. But if they're ever programmed to widen, widen King of Prussia Road more comprehensively, the right-of-way is there.
We did discuss that with Amy, and it was kind of a joint decision by both your consultant and Jim, that that widening was not necessary at this time. There was also, when we were in front of the shade tree, there's concerns, if you were to widen that, you do lose some very significant heritage trees out in front of the site, and that was not ideal for the shade tree commission. But from a purely traffic standpoint, Jim did work with Amy, and this is where they ultimately decided. But like Jim did say, it's able to be done. It's just, it doesn't make good traffic sense at this point, but that's why we're holding the road there, the right-of-way, should it ever happen, it could be done.
Well, the way I look at it, you just said 10% of the traffic is going to that SEPTA driveway, and so that's 10% of 7,000 trips a day, so 700, 7,500, so 750. And that section of the roadway becomes very congested during drop-off for the high school and drop-off and pickup. And there's also the bus depot, I think that that's the driveway you're showing on the left bottom side. So a lot of traffic in that little leg. I really think it probably would be easier for everyone to have that wider, just because of the nature of the parents, the buses that are coming out of that area, the people that are going and accessing the SEPTA, and then the people who would be accessing the development for Penn. Seems to me that I kinda, I would go the other way and put the width in there, because I think that this will alleviate some traffic issues.
So I'll just, I'll note one thing as well, Rich, because you did make a point, a good one. We are dedicating, did you note this, Jim, this left-hand turn lane, which is currently not striped? So if you're coming, would this be south on King of Prussia Road today? There is no dedicated left turn lane, there's just kind of what is a no-man's land.
Yeah, there's a center, there's a center, shared center.
Cross-striping.
Yeah.
So what we're doing, we are proposing striping a dedicated left lane, so that traffic can continue to move, and any traffic that would come into our site would in fact have its own lane, again, to allow the traffic to move that way. But we are able to evaluate traffic flow, and this is an important piece of what I think Penn can bring that maybe another applicant wouldn't. We do have an existing site very near this area, so we're able to really track where our traffic comes from and moves. And we believe at least 75% of our traffic will be generated off of Lancaster Avenue. That's given how we generate the traffic at our current site. So by moving the site from across the street to this site, we are pulling traffic off of the internal roads, Radnor Chester and King of Prussia, and pushing that traffic out to 30, where we're adding the improvements to bring them into the site without having a serious impact. With respect to school district traffic as well, we know that their peak happens earlier in the morning, closer to 7:30, which really does not mimic our site's peak.
Until they change the start times?
Even if they do change the starts, start times. We, as a general rule, you know, our traffic on this side of the site, we believe, is passed throughout the day. This side of the site, the hotel, is very minimal traffic and generally later in the day. And the office is your general overall traffic, which would meet, Rich, your, kind of your comment, what, 8:30 to 9:30, or whatever that might be.
So explain to me the movements from Raider Road left onto King of Prussia Road right there.
Right here?
And, right, no, no, from Raider Road, stuff in the school. So this is, the issue is the, is parents and others coming out and going left on King of Prussia Road and joining a massive amount of traffic on King of Prussia Road heading north towards not just yours, but also the other facilities that are on King of Prussia Road and Radnor Corporate Center.
It's a good question, right? So if you come out of our site and you make the left.
Right, and so is there gonna be a dedicated, there's a light there, so is there gonna be a dedicated arrow, or how's it gonna work?
Two points I'll make to that. So, one of the things we were asked to do was on the exit driveway for Raider Road, there are about five spaces as you approach King of Prussia Road on the right, which impact site vision, is that right, Jim? We were asked to work with the school district to allow those spots to be removed, to allow for a dedicated right, is that right, Jim? Out of the site, where those parking spots are, and to allow for a clearer site triangle. We've agreed to do that, we've agreed to take those spots, move them onto our site, and give those spots to the school district to allow them to remove those, as well as additional spaces. So we've, we've worked with the school district on that. So that's gonna allow for a smoother movement out to the right. But moving to the left, Rich, we are, again, anticipating that our traffic is coming from 30, like you noted, and moving north on King of Prussia Road, and coming into our site at Raider Road. Cars coming out of Raider Road and making a left on the King of Prussia Road are not interfering with our traffic. Our traffic will have already entered at the light, where there is no light today. So we're controlling that movement through a light, as well as through a dedicated right turn into the site, and a dedicated left turn into the school district site at Raider Road. So we're allowing for clean movement, as well as safe lefts and rights off the road.
It just seems that, and I understand what you're saying, is that some of that traffic is going to 250 King of Prussia Road, and that will no longer be happening, it'll be going here. But there's a lot of traffic that lines up from Lancaster Avenue all the way up to Radnor Chester Road, that are cars that are going to 201 King of Prussia Road, or that are going to the Air Gas Building, or Kessler Topaz, or to Radnor Corporate Center. So I think that there is a backup that you're, we're going to be dealing with, and that the width there, I think would be beneficial. I still think it would be beneficial. So I would ask that you look at that again, I don't think it's a major issue. I think that in the, I think that it won't be long before we'll be asked to widen that road. You're already providing for it, the dedicating of the right-of-way. My view would be to make it wider now and not have to come back later. And I think that if you didn't want to use it, if it's wider, you could stripe it and not use it. But otherwise, have it available, because I think it will be used and will be beneficial. All right, we can move on, unless you guys have something.
Can I just ask a quick question? So will there be left-turn arrows at that signal there? So for people coming into Raider Road and people coming out, are there gonna be left-turn arrows there, or?
Yeah, so the pavement markings will be left-turn arrows, the signal will not, we think. That is a warrant that needs to be satisfied by PennDOT.
Okay.
Based on the counts we have today, we don't think those warrants are gonna be met.
Okay.
But we're building this signal. We've decided, based on these discussions about the left-turn arrows, we will make sure the infrastructure is in place, should that warrant ever be warranted, that it'd be very easy to add the left-turn arrow.
I'm just thinking, at least a left-turn arrow into Raider Road would be nice for the kids.
Again, again, I think it would be beneficial to figure on left-turn arrows into Raider Road and out of Raider Road onto King of Prussia. And it's definitely going to be used. No reason to come back, honestly.
Could I finish? I'm sorry. One other thing, if, is this like an opportunity now to, like, have, ask, like, wish list things, or something that I would like to see happen?
Ask whatever you want.
Okay, so I guess, for me, and whether or not you decide to widen all the way up, you know, King of Prussia Road, if that's feasible, or whatever, you know, I don't object to that. But I'm just wondering if that work can be done in, during the summer, you know, maybe when the students are not, you know, it's not so heavily concentrated with students. And I guess I'm just thinking of my own kids, and, you know, new drivers and all that kind of stuff, like, the less obstacles, the better, and if that can be completed by the time maybe school starts, it'd be good.
We would, we would like to, as we've discussed, the signal itself will take some time because of PennDOT coordination, but I think that as, on our end, we would, we would be willing to do that. I think it all depends on, you know, getting through the preliminary approvals and the different approval process through the township here. But we understand that, and we agree with you. To get that work done before the end of the summer would be ideal.
Okay, so we're on number six, page eight. The width of the entrance and exit driveway shall be 25 feet for two-way use. That's referencing the SEPTA driveway, which is 20 feet today. As we've already mentioned, we're gonna widen it to 25 feet to comply. Number seven, very similar to one of the land development comments, we will have a minimum of five-foot curb or ADI along all the ADI on the site.
I'm sorry, can we just go back to the SEPTA?
Yes.
So the expectation is that people will come down that and walk on the sidewalk and come up to the intersection of Raider Road there to cross, if they're gonna cross to the high school?
No.
Or is there a?
Yeah, so this crosswalk doesn't exist, this is something we've committed to. I should just walk through the pavement markings, I didn't mention those when we were doing the, when I was going through all the improvements. Dave already mentioned this dedicated left turn lane, we're gonna have another one here so that the lefts don't block the through movements for both of these movements. This left is heavier into the school district. We think the queue, well, we have the room to provide a turn lane down to the southern service entrance, we're gonna have a short left turn lane for deliveries, but this is just a delivery driveway, so this has to be not very long at all. This is a couple hundred feet longer than we think is necessary for the lefts into the school, even without the arrow. So those are the pavement marking improvements. This crosswalk we've committed to, we haven't gotten to the point where we know the nature of it, like, will it be signalized? Will it be striped and signed? Like, we don't, we're not there yet. These crosswalks will be actuated, push button for pedestrians to call up a signal so they can cross. So yeah, pedestrians coming from SEPTA can cross here, they can go along the site, they can cross here, and they can come through the site, which should be a nice walk when it's done, and cross here. But the intent is for anyone from SEPTA or parking over here to be able to cross the street safely. That's, and have a couple different options to do so.
Okay, yeah, I like that, because I think whether we admit it or not, there are students that park up in that lot and come across the street. My kids never did it, but some of them do. No, I'm sure mine did. And then also, you know, I'm not exactly sure how many of our bus drivers take public transportation, I don't know if we have any kind of estimate on that, but still, you know, then it would be, I think, a challenge for them to walk all the way down, cross, then walk all the way back up, so I like that there's gonna be some sort of crosswalk there.
And it was explained to us, people are crossing now without the crosswalk, let's make it safe. And Penn Medicine believes in safety, so. Page eight, number eight. That's delineating the loading stalls on the plan, we've done it. Actually, number nine is to identify the area adjacent to the parking garage that is east of the loading area wall. So that, that's just picturing, the loading area for the Penn Medicine building is here, and the loading area is here for the hotel and the office. We just made that more clear on the plans. Number 10, sidewalks and pedestrian paths shall minimize pedestrian vehicle conflict. So that's about including the grass verge between the sidewalk. We'll have a five-foot strip where it's close to the road, so that is five feet away from the traffic. Here, we mentioned we get to several more feet as we peel away from the road. We've talked about the lighting, that's number 11. Number 12, steps or a combination of steps.
There are, through some of these pathways, there are slight steps through here, but again, this is a will comply comment, majority of our site is ADA compliant without steps. There are a few locations where we have steps, where we provide secondary access to the same places.
Okay. Number 11, dumpster locations, just went through that. Yeah.
Some redundant comments, so. We can talk about the steep slopes, right, where they say the five-foot sidewalks, talk about the dumpsters already, the width of the loading docks, and the.
You're talking about items 11, 12, and 13?
Yes, I think we've already referred.
Those are all will comply and very similar to Roger's letter, so I just wanted to make sure we already addressed them.
So B1 talks about the trail, we've already discussed, that includes the five-foot separation between the two, it includes the trail through the site rather than along the frontage. But the real point, I think, of B1 was to provide a pathway from left to right on our property, and that's what we're doing now, we comply with that comment.
B2 is provide separate pavement marking and signage plans, that's typical for a final design, and we will do it. Number three, specifically about the signage and striping for stop conditions, put in a stop sign and a stop bar. We're doing that.
Yeah, number four talks about no parking signs along the SEPTA road, which we've added to the plan set. And minimum crosswalks, our crosswalks, we've made wider, they were five feet on the previous plans, they're now six. And we've extended this double yellow line here through, up to the requested amount, so that covers number six as well. Number seven talks about stop bars, again, we've added those in, in the plan set. Eight and nine are notes on just a specification for the signs, those have been fixed. Number 10 talks about, again, symbol callouts for the signage, again, these are more clerical than anything. And see, we'll get to number 11, I think, is actually the large comment, so. You wanna explain that one, Jim?
Yeah, so our initial submission had one exit lane from the site. Amy recommended we look at two, we did, we think it's a good idea, and we'll comply.
Yeah, so it's on the main driveway, right?
So the main driveway has.
Yes, we've got two lanes out.
Yeah, one lane in, two lanes out, so you can separate the lefts and the rights. So number 12 was based on our initial submission, since then, since we've agreed to widen all the way up to Raider Road, this kind of goes away. This had to do with the lane configuration at the southern driveway. Basically, the rightmost lane is a shared right-through on northbound. And we are keeping a very short left-turn lane, so that any lefts going in to make a delivery get out of the through movement. We don't anticipate any queues there at all, because it's just a delivery drive. But, so it's a little different than what was suggested in the comment, but it has to do with the overall widening that we proposed.
How are you going to have any trucks? If it's delivery, I'm thinking it's gonna be trucks. If it's delivery, I'm thinking it's going to be trucks.
Yeah.
What trucks are going to be coming from this direction? The only way trucks are coming from this direction is if they came up Radnor Chester Road and made the right.
You mean coming southbound on King of Precia Road? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So to make that turn in there, it's almost going to be no deliveries that are going to be in that area.
Yeah, I expect you're right. But we have the room between Raider Road and the southern driveway to have a left turn lane into the school that's a couple hundred feet longer than we need and leave this little refuge area for anyone that might be making that left. But I agree. I can't imagine it being heavily used.
Trash trucks, FedEx trucks, things like that. Yeah, it's gone.
All right, any other, there's several pages here, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we can skip a lot of them. A lot of them are clerical and.
That's okay. Can we skip the clearer ones? I want to make sure.
Yeah. You guys.
I mean, it's fine with me. Like I said, I wanted to give Rich plenty of time to go through.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's some more, there's some substantive things here and.
What number?
Well, 13 through 17 on 11 are about curb ADI. They're all will comply. Pretty easy to comply. Coordinate with the fire marshal. We're doing all those things.
18, again, that's a lot of more detailed traffic, road improvement plans. So those are all will complies during the later stages. 18D was about the coordination with the school district that Jim mentioned earlier. And then pushes us into the traffic impact study comments. Is everyone okay?
I think so. Rich, you good? Lisa?
Okay.
A1, recommending that we coordinate with SEPTA about installing a bus shelter for the bus routes along King of Precia Road. We will do that. We're anticipating that it would be near here, the SEPTA driveway, but, you know, we have a lot of flexibility depending on SEPTA's needs. So 2A talks about the schools not being in session during when we did the traffic counts. We went back and looked at it. There was a grammar school that was not in session when we did it. The high school was in session. And we compared the traffic counts to some other traffic data we had for the same locations that clearly all the schools were in town. And we noticed no difference. So we think our counts are adequate for the study and your traffic consultant has agreed. B, the crash data, we had it in our TIS. We've pulled it out. Ask for some more traffic data or crash data from PennDOT and from the Radnor Township Police. We've gotten that data from Township Police. We've put it, and from PennDOT, we've put it in a separate report and it will be in Amy's hands probably tomorrow.
All these notes are from, it says the letter from Gilmore is based on the old plans, right?
Yeah, so this is the comment response letter from our initial September submission. So we have revised our traffic study and our plans based on this letter already. We actually came here and went through this letter at the Board of Commissioners once. So this is, this is a little old news. We're complying with all of this. But I can keep going. Three talks about removing the 7% transit ridership reduction we were anticipating. And we're taking great care to connect to the transit, but we did that, removed the 7% from the analysis. So that's not part of our calculations anymore. We have provided the warrant analysis they request. That's five. So, I mean, that's four. Number five is what we've been discussing quite a bit. This is where the township ordinance require that we list recommendations to bring any of the study intersections that don't meet a level of service C, list what improvements would have to happen to do that. We were requesting a waiver because we feel, A, we are meeting the mitigation requirements that PennDOT and all the other townships locally in PennDOT District Six use. And we thought that this exercise wasn't, it wasn't constructive.
Well, but this is inconsistent, though, with what the new letter says. It says the applicant is requesting a waiver. So it's, first of all, you have to change that. This is not right, if that's what you believe. But I believe that you still do need a waiver. And what if, it also says if evaluation of the horizon year build condition indicates the overall intersection level of service has dropped, the applicant will be required to mitigate the level of service. So I'll go into that. It really depends on your, as I understand it, your projections on the base year. I think that there's an argument that we, that this does drop, but this is a very important element. So if nothing else, it's inconsistent, your letters are inconsistent. And your traffic study is inconsistent with what we have today. So you have to clean that up and let's go through this. I'm going to touch on this later. Let's go through it.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think you're right, Rich. The letter that you're looking at dated January 17, right? That's the overall Panoni letter. And the letter that you were given today, February 1. So those letters are inconsistent because we've supplemented that. All of this is kind of going through the process and we've been working with your consultants on that. But you're absolutely right insofar as we do need ultimately to clean up our letters, but we're going to get new comment letters from your consultants.
Right. So, and that was, you know, this has all got to be for next week, I guess. So you're on schedule to get all new letters and under the new letters, new plans, address, and then all the dates and all these things coordinated?
So all the things that we went through tonight, Mike and Jim, they're all represented on new plans, actually the ones that are up here. So when they were kind of identifying the areas where we've corrected those things, those either are or will be submitted to the township so that you all will have them in enough time for your review for the 12th. And we also believe that your consultants will be issuing, and Steve, I guess you can chime in if I'm wrong, will be issuing their new letters and they'll also be available to you with adequate time for review. But we came tonight, kind of before those things were out, so we could walk through these plans and each of the comments before they were removed or altered from the previous letters so that you guys saw that we actually did go through and address those items. So that's really the exercise we were going through tonight so that when you got updated letters, you actually now saw them on the plan and we were discussing our responses to your consultants. That's what we're here doing.
Yeah, so commissioners, the applicant is required to have everything to the township as well as our consultants to have the latest and greatest review letters in time to be included in your packet. And whomever wishes to have hard copies, we will provide that as well as the electronic versions that are standard.
So I just want to understand this because my understanding was there was an issue with bringing these intersections from Level E with bringing them up. And now what you're saying is you're going to be able to bring them all up to Level C?
That is not what I'm saying.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. I'm unclear what this is saying.
So there's.
We should just, I think we have to work with Amy on this too. So first thing we should do is probably talk about what's required in your ordinance. And then that's ultimately what we're required to do. So this specific point, 255, 20B5D6 states that we provide this letter to the township. That's our interpretation. That's your consultant's interpretation. Amy, is that your interpretation of that?
That is true, but if you skip down two sections, it references that Section A and it discusses that you're required to identify what the improvements are, costs associated with it, party responsible for it, and how it might be implemented. And so for many of these things, these are what we would call existing conditions. So it would not be the responsibility of the applicant in those situations.
Great.
But anything that is new would be your responsibility.
We have to mitigate our traffic.
I was just sitting here writing you an email to explain all that.
So we have to mitigate our traffic and we know that. But that necessarily, and Jim will speak to this, that's not so much speaking about level of service. It's speaking about our impact on level of service.
Correct.
Yeah, and the improvements that I started this with accomplish that. They mitigate the traffic of this development. They don't fix all the problems in Radnor Township or in the study area. So our interpretation of this part of the SALDO ordinance is that you need to list what those improvements might be. You need to provide the improvements that mitigate our traffic. So that's the distinction. We think with our letter that was issued subsequent to this letter, we comply with the ordinance, but we're still proposing to mitigate our traffic as we always have
Again, this needs to be cleaned up because it's inconsistent and I'm not sure that you've identified everything that you call your traffic so that it can be evaluated to whether it's being mitigated, whether it was existing conditions or whether it's part of your improvements. And then again, I have some, when you finish, I'm going to go through my comments because I think that this is an issue that I disagree. I think you're closer to it, the way it's written here, than what you're saying now.
Number six talks about listing what Penn does to promote transit. Penn does a lot. We've listed it in the traffic study. That's with their employees. B1, B is the general traffic impact comments. This comment has to do with whether we took a credit or not for the traffic that would be associated with the existing condition of the office building. And this takes a little more explanation. So our traffic study talks about the existing conditions today, the future no build. That's where Penn goes away, doesn't build this. What does the future of the traffic look like in the study area? Then the future build, if Penn builds their development. And then the future build with the mitigations we're proposing, right? So if you walk through the steps, it's like, what's it look like today? If we didn't do anything, what's it going to look like? And the what's it going to look like stage, if Penn weren't here, is a 427,000 square foot office building occupied and operated. There's been a lot of discussion how it used to be occupied, used to operate, used to generate a fair amount of traffic. We don't disagree. That's what the future would look like if Penn were not here. So that's the future no build. The future build is Penn demolishes the existing buildings, builds the development we've been talking about here. And what is the traffic associated with that? And then the future build with mitigation is what does the traffic look like with the roadway improvements that I've described? Does that get us back to the future no build? And it does. So that's sort of the process. I think taking credit was a term that may have been inappropriate in this response, but what we're doing, that's how we're modeling the traffic and that's an appropriate way to do so. And we've worked with your consultants to that conclusion as well. So that one's a little involved. Are there any questions on that?
Again, I have a lot of questions on this whole, so I have about, I have 20 or 30 comments on the traffic report we've got to go through. So that's why I'm kind of going to get to that.
Yeah, yeah. So two through 12 really are clerical comments in the traffic study? 14 talks about how we should, when we build this new signal, tie it into the coordinated systems that are already there. We will do that. And that's it for the traffic impact study comments from your consultant.
So my question's on the traffic impact study. Page five, I'll start with, on the traffic impact study. And we talked about it right here. Your traffic counts, I don't know of any time where you have, the elementary school leaves early around Thanksgiving, but the high school doesn't, but maybe there is. Seems to me that November for traffic counts is right around Thanksgiving, the 18th and the 24th, is not the best, it's not really indicative of traffic that's going to be at the schools. But the bigger issue for me is all of these dates. November 18, 2015 is one, two, three, four, four of the 10. 40% of it is from 2015. The rest of it is early 2016. This traffic data is too old. It should be updated, I would think. I think that we've had a lot of increase in traffic due to King of Precia and its development in the last three years. So this traffic count seems stale. I would ask that the applicant update these traffic counts so that we have a more recent, a more recent count so that we are sure that we're accurate. It's three years old, this stuff.
We use counts from different dates. When we did count to different dates, we did some overlap counts to make sure they were consistent, and they were. I don't think it's necessary to update the counts, but it's ultimately.
Again, three years old, I think, is just, I don't think it's a big ask and it's a lot, it would provide a lot more comfort for me and the constituents if we had up-to-date
Not following the three years because three years is typically what we require. That PennDOT requires that if the traffic counts are older than three years, then they need to be recounted. But I'm not seeing anything that's over three years in this list.
It's pretty close to three years.
It's not, it's not. It's two years and two months.
November 2015, we're in 2018 right now, so it's.
We're two months past November. I'm not going to.
Still, I think even, for this particular, again, in light of the circumstances we have here, and I have noted an increase in King of Precia Road and our police have noted an increase in truck strikes on the bridge up north of this site. I think that there is evidence that we have more traffic changed in conditions from two years and two months or two years ago, going on three years. Would really like to see up-to-date traffic. It's too old for 475,000 square feet and half of it is going to be developed even How long would it take to do that?
To do new traffic counts?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, each count is a day's effort. We do the morning and PM peak at each location. So we did this on three separate dates, probably three separate dates.
Doesn't sound like a lot to update these.
Penn's position has always been that we will do whatever is necessary, but we don't want to waste our time. If these counts are current by all the standards, then I don't, I don't think that's necessary, but it's noted. You think they should be more current.
And again, we have seen a significant increase in the number of trucks that have been hitting the bridge at King of Precia Road. My view is that, my anecdotal experience is that there's increase in traffic on this road and it's due to cut through traffic from the developments in King of Precia, in my view. But it's not documented. We have no documents. So again, I think it would be prudent, reasonable, and to spend a few extra days to update this data. And if there is a difference, we'll know about it. If there's no difference, I don't think that it penalizes Penn at all. Now, my next issue goes to page nine on the traffic study. I believe that the base assumption. I believe that the base assumption that you're comparing your traffic studies to is overstated. The traffic study indicates that the existing 427,000 square foot of office is used, fully occupied, as general office. The fact of it is, is that the existing site has 228,000 square foot of lab space, 78,000 square foot of office research, and then the rest of it is office. So to develop a existing site generation that is used as our no-build basis, I think is overstated and too high. You have 3,900 weekday trips per day, and my view is it's much closer to 2,500. And that, the Biomed, the existing conditions should be changed to reflect 228,887 square foot of lab. Now, I get that data from the 2012 information that was prepared from Biomed, and this was prepared by Kaplan-Stewart and George Brosman.
They were opposing that plan, Rich.
That's true, but again, this is not, currently, it's not all office, so I think that's overstated.
No, you're right. So the response to that is, when the Biomed buildings were last occupied, they were not all office. However, the zoning permits and all-office development, which you know under the existing PLO, irrespective of any amendment, and what the owner of that property, the trustees or any other owner, could do is come in and occupy that building for office. There would be no requirement that it be lab. There's no limit on what you can use the property for. That would require nothing from this board. It would simply be required to occupy the buildings as they are. Any fit-out would be through the permitting process, but beyond that, there's nothing. So it's not an overstatement. It's simply reflecting what the buildings could be used for without any approval from this board. So I guess you could look at it either way. You could say, go back and say, how was it used? We want to turn the page back and leave it just at that. But that's not how it's owned today.
Well, again, I would disagree with that. I'm looking at the transcript here from January 16, 2014, on the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, but that was before we owned the property.
That's true, but the township's position is that, in a quote from Peter, "The township's position is that in the order for Biomed to do anything with this site, they would have to file for some sort of application, some sort of permit or approval, granting of which would trigger an appealable event." And moreover...
There would certainly be permitting, which I said, but it would not be an approval from this board to occupy that building for office.
Moreover, Mr. Brosman indicated, and his quote, "As I said, I haven't heard anybody say that they agree that there is not a right to build for, build out all office. Mr. Nelson says, 'I have said that. I flat-out said they can't.'" So the issue is...
Can you read that entire, is it, what's the number that they referenced? No, no. So you, it was 400 and how much?
475,000.
So we're talking about 427.
27, but the issue is all office.
No, but that's, so that's a misrepresentation of that discussion point on the hearing. You're talking about a proposed development of 475 versus an existing condition of 427. So I think we have to look at it accurately. I think what that discussion was saying is, is there a right at this moment to build 475,000 square feet?
Of all office.
That's a build. And I think you had represented that the interpretation from your solicitor at that moment was no, but the question was not, can they occupy 427,100 square feet, which is there today? Because I think, had that been the question, your answer would have been slightly different from your solicitor, because of course, the buildings exist today. It would not require any new build. It would require interior fit-out, which is a permitting process, and not an approval process. So we have to make sure we're evaluating the facts as they were and not kind of bending them to meet an argument.
Well, I think that that's exactly what Penn has done here, is bent the facts to meet their argument, that they can justify almost 4,000 trips per day. This is, this is an overstatement, and...
So how, so let's...
And you're ignoring, you're ignoring two elements. One, it's clear there was lab, almost half of the site, as it existed, was lab, which is a much lower, much lower than general office. And then two, the second issue is, if you, to fit this out, at 427,000 square feet of all general office, you have insufficient parking on the existing site. And you would require a permit to do that.
But it's, it's an existing condition. The site is an existing condition. What I'm saying to you is, if we were to occupy the existing conditions on this site, they are what they are if we don't amend the buildings. And what we're saying is, 420, we're not saying 475, which we believe to be the ultimate buy right here, 427,110 is an existing condition today, which would require no build from the trustees or any office owner. So that's why we're using that number as our base condition.
I understand. It would require a restructuring and a build interior.
A permit.
Interior.
Building permit.
And it would require additional parking. This is overstated, and you can say, well, it's overstated by, you know, a small percentage. I believe it's overstated by 50% or something, but it is a huge issue for this whole traffic study and its evaluation of the, as the 2020 and the 2025 built, built condition with mitigation versus the base.
Yeah.
Now, what, I know you guys know this, but the constituents, the people watching this, the people in the audience, they know King of Pressure Road today, they know this site for the last 10 years as zero, not as 4,000, as the base case, to which you are comparing your new traffic and mitigation. This is going to be a huge shock to all of the constituents. It's going to be a massive difference that only a handful of people will have understanding of and are aware of now. To everyone in the, in the public and commuters, this will look like a massive, massive change because as it exists today in real life, it's not 4,000, it's not close to 4,000, it's not my number, 2,500, it is zero, and it has been that way for 10 years.
But we know, I mean, everybody here knows, it's not going to stay zero. Whether it's the trustees or it's some other owner that comes in, there will be development on this site. So...
But I guess, I'm saying is, not everybody will know that. The public will not understand how we could have allowed so much traffic to be on the roads and to say, there is no different from the no-build condition, because they will not understand that you are projecting a 4,000 per day trips on a no-build, on a no-build basis. The public knows that there's nobody there, the no-build is zero.
So, I mean, which is why I think this discussion is important, right? So we're, we're highlighting what that, how that analysis is done, how we got there. And so we have our position, and you have yours, but I think ultimately, we have to listen to your consultants that drive how we get to this point. And we, and we follow, you know, Rich, we follow kind of the traffic data and the way that these studies are handled everywhere, not just in Radnor, not just at 145 King of Pressure Road. And so that's what Panone is tasked with, and that's what Amy's tasked with. So that's how we got here.
Well, we don't have, this is the first time we're using this ordinance, this is the first time we have any kind of ambulatory care in Radnor.
Yeah, but this has nothing to do with the PLO amendment.
So, what I would say is, what can we do to negotiate, in good faith, this base number? I think this base number is high. I think it ignores the existing lab space and the existing lack of parking.
This is not a negotiable position. This is a data point. It's a data point.
But the data point was subjectively arrived at, is not objectively arrived at.
It was not. Rich, it's an existing condition. Whether the buildings are occupied for this purpose, for this data point, just isn't relevant, and you can't negotiate on a data point. It just is what it is.
It's a huge issue. It's a huge data point because it's the baseline that you're establishing by projection. It is a theoretical baseline.
But it's all projection.
There's nothing, there's nothing more important than this baseline projection. So what I'm hearing Penn say is that they refuse to take into account the 228,000 square feet of lab that's there.
We can't take in the position of an attorney that was hired to oppose a previous development at no, you know, at no consideration of the cost it would take to oppose it. Ultimately, this very board, the Board of Commissioners, rejected all of those findings that were presented by Mr. Kaplan, representing Brandewine, opposing the Biomed application. So even the Board of Commissioners didn't agree with that interpretation. It's convenient now to still oppose this, but it was not adopted as, as relevant data. It was an, it was an opposition point raised by somebody who did not want this property developed. I mean, that, we have to look at it for what it was.
I disagree. It was not adopted. I think that it is valid. It is a township's position, and I think that counselor, that the trustees, the University of Pennsylvania are being unreasonable in, in first, in having three, two-and-a-half-year-old traffic data and now failing to take into consideration this laboratory, 228,000 square feet, which is tremendously important in the analysis that comes forth and conclusions that come forth. So let's move on.
We hear your point. Thank you.
Now, when I look at page 10, we talk about the no-build level of service as it sits today, and you're showing low level of service, but again, if we took into consideration a lower number, I think that that would change. So the table would, would change if we would use 2,500 or some number closer to 3,000 or less, not the, not the number of 4,000. So my next, my next issue is on page 20, trip generation rates for the medical mixed office use. Now, this table five, the trip generation data, I would say, is purely speculative, and there is no ITE trip data. Ian, can we get the table? I'm going to put this, let me put that on the table. Now, in my prior review of this issue, and I wanted to ask if this data has changed since we looked at this last year. Last year, we had one of your comparable facilities here, and you see it on page 20, the Fern Hill facility that you're using to develop what the mixed medical traffic will be, since there's no ITE data, to extrapolate. I pointed out last year that you look at the Fern Hill facility at 167,000 square feet, and the new facility that we have here, 250,000 square feet, and the university, the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania are claiming that the bigger facility, the new facility, with a comparable allocation of space within, actually has less traffic than a much smaller existing facility. And I question how that could possibly be the case. And if that is not the case, then that once again calls into question the accuracy of the numbers that are used in this table.
Commissioner Booker, you may recall, at the time, we were looking at patient positions and not square footages. We've maintained all along that this new facility is going to have some very large spaces per patient. So the square footage doesn't surprise me at all, it's the patient positions. This Fern Hill site, if I recall, this is a while ago, had a number of rehab facilities where you can fit a lot of patients per square foot. The new facility that we're proposing has 30,000-foot surgical centers, where there is one patient in there. So that's why we, in general, picked three sites that are comparable, did counts for those, and use those to generate the anticipated trips from this facility based on the patient positions.
So I have the sheet that we used last year. This shows 193 patient positions for Fern Hill and then 200 patient positions in the clinical space. So there's patient positions. So my question is, is this, is this data accurate with respect to this revised facility? And is this now not applicable to what we're looking at today, or is this the same condition? And if it is the same condition, how do the patient positions vary, and where's the data to back up what you have in your table? You want to take a look? Here's the, here's the one we had last, last year. This has Fern Hill, it has patient positions, and this has the old design.
Yeah, so this study from a year ago, just to be clear, was to generate the trip generation rates to be used for patient position. That had been, that had been hashed through for over a year with the board, with your consultant, and we used the conclusion of that effort, which is the trips per patient position, to apply to the 271 patient positions at the new facility to generate the anticipated traffic for the new facility. I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're asking, but that's, that's what the process was.
And I understand that, and I agree that that is the process. What I am questioning is whether the very important data that you've, the conclusions you've reached on your trip generation, which once again, the trip generation from your analysis and extrapolation from existing facilities is going to be used to compare build to no build. So I want to be sure that it's accurate, and I called into question its accuracy in the past, and I still call into question the accuracy, that this facility could be less, have less trips than Fern Hill, not with, just because of the vast, much bigger square foot, even with the patient positions that appear to me to be similar.
So when we did this study, there aren't, we were talking about what an ambulatory care building is like versus a medical office building or a doctor's office. Penn could only look at their history, have other similar facilities. They're similar only in a certain amount of ways. So Fern Hill numbers, yes, are the same, but they, as they were, we probably assume they are the same as when, in that study. The big difference is it had no surgery, it had no cancer care. Those are the two big programs that are going into Radnor that have a very high square foot per patient position. What has, what has changed since then is, in fact, the ambulatory portion of the Radnor has gone up, so that we are actually more square foot per patient position today, slightly more than we were in this position. So it's more like 50/50 currently. So Radnor has gotten better. The Brander numbers have gotten a little bit better in that timeframe, since we know more about them.
Would the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania supplement this table to provide the basis and the documentation upon which it's, how you generated these, these numbers for the trips?
We used an average, I believe, of all of these.
Can you provide the backup for that, or did you provide it to Amy? I haven't seen it.
It's in the report.
Amy, they did provide that to you?
It was. During the, when we were doing the PLO zoning, all that information was provided. I think we did two or three reviews, had them revise things. I spent quite a few hours, I believe, on the phone going through the calculations and verifying the information they provided. And then we actually did require them to go make some additional count, because we didn't feel that the first counts were comparable to what's going on in the Radnor area. So just from memory, I can recall that there was quite a bit of analysis done.
We started out with two comparable facilities. We added a third based on Amy's recommendation. But it's all been, it, it's all was done to come up with the rate for trip gen. That's all been done before. Now, the trip gen is just the trip gen based on the patient positions in the, in the facility.
I guess what I'm looking for is a reconciliation of this new trip generation back to the prior data, or some data. I have, all I get is just, well, all right, you might have, there might be more in here. I looked at this whole report. I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at it, and... to look at it, and, but, I'm looking for some comfort on where these numbers came from and how they relate to the prior review. I don't feel I have it. Can somebody provide that for me, whether it's the applicant or our staff, is my question.
So, the township already has the information that came up with the trip generation rates. I'm sure we can provide that to you. If you're looking for the breakdown of the design of the new space?
I'm looking for, how is it different from what we looked at last year? And I'm looking at the change, the delta, and is that consistent with the delta in the buildings? That's what I want you to show me. So, it's not a detail, but it's an overall check that the numbers you're coming up with are accurate, because there have been changes. And again...
We can provide an update to this plan that shows that it's, if anything, it's better today in terms of the square foot per patient position.
If you could do that, that's what I'm requesting.
It didn't match, it didn't match this study?
Alright, my next issue is on number 21. Alright, let me get those back. Thank you. Page 21, again, we have tables. There is no data for weekends. There's no weekend data on table six, and I think that I see, this traffic study seems to be devoid of weekend information. The current facility has quite a bit of weekend activity, and I would believe that this one will too. Can we get some data on the weekends instead of just weekday trips?
We did not collect any weekend traffic data for the study.
Is it going to be closed on weekends?
It's not going to be closed on weekends.
I didn't think it would be.
The peak hour considered in the study is the peak hour of the roadway, not necessarily the peak hour of the facility. And my understanding is the peak hour of the roadway is during the week, during the morning, in the evening rush hours.
Okay, but again, that's a theoretical, that's a consultant's comment, but people, we all live here on Monday, we live there on Saturday and Sunday as well. So, we want to know what it's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, I don't think that's, I don't, I think you're on point on that one. I mean, the whole point here is that traffic's going to be sparsed out compared to what could be there, right? The traffic's going to be sparsed out from rush hour to other times throughout the day, and on the weekends. I mean, there is going to be weekend activity here, so I think he's right.
So, it's limited weekend activity. Penn, it's not a, it's a limited operation on the weekends. But there is operation, for sure.
And my guess is it's going to be in excess of what we have today, and I want to get a sense of what that is. There's going to be more from this facility on the weekend than we have currently.
But the traffic generated on the weekend will never exceed your weekday traffic peak hour.
So, the, if I may, so the point of the traffic study is to identify the infrastructure improvements we need to do. When it comes time to build this signal, we're going to have timing programs for the morning during the week, the middle of the night, the evening peak hour, and weekend programming. So, we will need data for when we actually design the timing for the signals. But what Dave just said, I think, is accurate.
Well, so again, what I hear and what I feel as a representative of the constituents is that you don't care that the people who live there will be operating on the weekend. It just doesn't come into, it's just not a dataset that you care about, and you're not going to provide it.
Rich, I just, I think that's not a fair statement.
Well, it's how I feel. So, that is fair, because that's how I feel.
Well, then, it's a fair representation of your feelings. I don't think it's a fair representation of the trustees and their position, because that's what your opinion is reflecting.
Well, then, can the trustees provide this weekend data for us?
What I'm telling you, you're asking a traffic engineer why he collected the data that he collected.
I'm not asking why. I'm asking, will he provide weekend data?
Can I finish? It's being collected to find the most intense traffic on a road so that we can mitigate that traffic. That's our job, find the most intense and mitigate it. The traffic on the weekends is not the most intense, but we're still mitigating that traffic, because the improvements we're installing are not weekday improvements. They're everyday improvements. So, they're going to be timed and signaled to address all the traffic. So, we're being, we are being responsive to everything that we're doing, weekdays, weekends, weeknights, whatever it is. Our improvements are there to mitigate our existence at this site. So, we aren't ignoring it. We're finding the worst possible time during the day and saying, that's what we're going to mitigate. Everything else that doesn't happen that exists around that fringe, we're mitigating that as well.
Again, I understand exactly what you're doing, and you are providing a consultant's answer. Again, my view of it is, is that it's not responsive to the constituents. It ignores what we are going to deal with on the weekend, and it ignores the relative change on the weekend traffic when the constituents will be out there. And I would also point out, the ITE data, our standard data, ITE does provide in their standard spreadsheet a weekday and a Saturday. I'm asking, so, you know, again, I don't want to hear another consultant answer. I know what you're saying. We don't have to do it, Rich. You're not going to get it, and we don't care what you think.
That wasn't what I was going to say.
But what I'm going to tell you is, I want, I would, I'm asking for Saturday and weekend.
The Saturday information in those charts shows that there's a lower trip generation for those sites during a Saturday.
So, can we, why can't we get it? Why are you fighting me on giving me the information?
It's because we didn't request that they do it, because it serves no purpose.
I know. That's why we're reviewing it now, and I'm requesting it now. So, you see why people get frustrated, because we ask for things, and it's just like, nope, we're not going to give it to you. We ignore it.
But so, you've just asked for it. What purpose is it going to serve? So, you've heard your consultant say it's going to produce a number.
Again, I just told you what the, the purpose, I believe it's important so our people who are in the community have the relative weekend traffic data, so that they have an understanding of the delta from what they have today and what they have when this is done. Now, I understand that you all think that what I think is unimportant, and that I don't know what I'm talking about. But I'm asking for it, because I think that the people I represent would want this information, and even if they don't, I want it. And so, that's what I'm asking for. And you're saying, no, you're not going to give it to me.
To try to keep this moving, because we're two hours in, and I know people want to talk. You know, if the answer's no, then, I mean, there's nothing we can force here tonight.
No, we're not, we can't get you the data before we're asking for preliminary approval. If you want us to count cars on a Saturday after our preliminary approval, we're happy to do it. The numbers are going to be less than your weekday travel. All it's going to do is show you a number, a number. But our improvements are being implemented to mitigate a much higher traffic level. So, anything below that is going to be mitigated well above what it would otherwise be required. So, what I'm saying to you, it's not, we're not answering the question. We are saying, we're going to a worse spot. We're going to the worst possible travel number, and that's what a traffic consultant does. And then they say, fix this, mitigate this moment during the day. And then, if you do that, every other number's less, you're going to help all of those as well. So, we're not disputing the fact there's going to be traffic on the weekends. Of course there is. We're going to have limited operation then. But all of our traffic mitigation improvements will be functioning at their full capacity during those weekend limited operations.
Again, we understand each other perfectly. You're not going to give me the information. You think it's not important, and it's not relevant. Again, I think it's relevant whether it's mitigated or not mitigated, whether it's existing or not existing. I'd also point out, table seven, existing building office 427, 427,000, 110,000 square feet, 3,000 weekday trips versus this structure, which will have 7,000. Huge difference over a projection, and it's 7,000 versus zero today. So, again, I can't stress enough how different this is going to be for the constituents. On to page 38, this is the same issue, page 38. I believe that we should do two things. One, redo the traffic counts to update the traffic counts. That could affect the base year. Two, we should reduce the base year trips so that, or the base condition trips, not base it on a full occupancy of 427,000 square feet. And that will show a reduction in the traffic on the no build condition, which would increase the level of service and which, my view, is likely to result in a condition where the built-out condition, even with mitigation of traffic, will deteriorate conditions. And on page 38, we talk about the same issue. King of Pressure Road intersection. So, specifically in this case, what the applicant says is, "The King of Pressure Road intersections at Radnor Chester Road and Matson Ford Road would require two lanes in each direction on King of Pressure Road and dual turn lanes on the minor approaches. Due to the physical constraints at most of the project intersections, including the Septa Rail Bridge and the I-76 Bridges, the necessary improvements are not feasible and are not proposed by the applicant." Completely inconsistent with what you're saying tonight. So, this must be wrong now, then.
What I said initially was, we submitted additional data that meets that requirement of the Saldo ordinance that says what the improvements will be. We are still consistently proposing the improvements that mitigate our traffic. So, this part, yes, is old. We've submitted new stuff now that lists what those improvements would be, and we're not changing what we're proposing.
Again, I'm pointing this out, because there's a lot of cleanup work that needs to happen here, and we're very, very close. Now, Attorney Falcone and others are pressuring, this has got to be done. And I'm pointing out, there's a lot of stuff. We've got to coordinate it, get it cleaned up. We need to update the letters. We need to look at it and understand it, make sure it's all right, because it's inconsistent.
Rich, we are not, we don't create timelines. Penn, the MPC does.
Well, you can give us a waiver then.
The MPC creates it, and the information you are saying needs all this cleanup has been done.
Okay, well, I haven't seen it.
So, no, wait a second, wait a second. Some of the data that you're questioning us on now, you've had for many months.
I haven't had it.
Yes, you have.
I haven't.
So, okay.
This is the first, I got 600 pages on the Wednesday before the 22nd. So, let's just go, let's just go on to the...
We didn't, this is not the first time we've submitted this traffic data. We've been discussing all of these numbers with your consultants and with the township for many, many months.
Alright, Dave, come on. We don't want, I'm going to, here's the thing. I never saw this plan till the Wednesday before the 22nd. Never saw it.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying...
And I've never seen this traffic report. It's dated January 17th.
Rich, what I'm saying is, we've had, we have really fleshed out these traffic numbers with your planning commission and with your traffic consultant over many, many, many months. So, this, we didn't just turn this in on the 17th, is what I'm saying. So, I just want you to know that.
What I'm saying is, I'm just getting it now, and I am shocked with how, what hardship this is going to be for my constituents and my neighbors. And let's go on to the traffic impact study tables at the end on page 41, and at SEC. So, I'm looking at what we're saying is adequate by the trustees and Dave Falcone. In the AM, in the AM for 2020, for the year 2020, the AM, when we compare the no build with what I believe is an inflated base condition and the build with traffic mitigation, we still have, King of Pressure Road and Matson Ford is still a D, and your data shows it's a D, and it remains a D level of service. King of Pressure Road at Radnor Chester Road, so the first one's King of Pressure Road at Matson Ford, I think I said that. The next one is King of Pressure Road at Radnor Chester. That goes from F to F. And then, Lancaster Avenue and the off-ramps to I-476, that also is a condition that still is, finishes up as a D on page 42 with the build and mitigation. And I also point out Lancaster Avenue on-ramp at the, it says, Hillside Circle, multiple directions there are in substandard level of service and failing, but yet you come out with an A. I still see that there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of traffic there. So, at least three intersections out of 10, 30%, you're going to build all this stuff and still leave it at a D or an F or an E level of service, well below what a C is. And you're saying to, saying to me, Rich, too bad, it's, that's what it is, that's what it is based on our projection of no build, and we don't need to do anything. I'm disagreeing. And let me just, let me just finish. And so, the PM, the PM condition for 2020 is similar. We have an F at King of Pressure Road and Radnor Chester. We have an E at Lancaster Avenue and the on-ramps to I-476. And Lancaster Avenue and Radnor Chester is also E. That one does improve a little bit on the, to a D. But again, these are all subpar intersections, and you're saying that you're going to leave them. For 2025, we have similar results. These same intersections are D, F, and E in the AM, and D, F, and E in the PM. And we have an additional one in 2025, the Lancaster Avenue and Radnor Chester Road, as well as the Lancaster Avenue and the off-ramps. So, this documents the substandard condition that even with the traffic mitigation that the people in this community are going to have to deal with. And again, this is a D to a D or an E to an E in comparison based on your projection of a build-out of 427,000 square feet of all office, when the reality that the people know is zero. I'm asking for the University of Pennsylvania and the medical system to mitigate this traffic and to not just list what you have here, but to actually make it better than it is, especially since you're basing it on a projection. That's what I want you to do.
So, I think what we should probably do is ask your consultant, right? You think our opinion is biased? It probably is, right? We're an applicant.
Yeah, it would have to be. If it wouldn't be, then you wouldn't be doing your job.
Sure. So, I, I'm going to ask, let's ask your consultant, because she is here to represent you and to evaluate our data on behalf of the township. So, we've submitted our plans and our proposed traffic improvements, and we believe we've met the spirit, the language, the intent of your ordinance, which is incumbent on any applicant, whether it's the trustees or anybody else. That's our job. And if we don't, then we have to keep digging until we do. So, we think we've done that. And so, we can ask Amy, because that's really what this is about. It's about traffic. So...
Well, with all due respect, I know what Amy's going to say. She's going to agree that you've met the minimum requirement that we provided for you. I disagreed with the minimum requirement that we set. This was a bad ordinance, and you know how I feel about it. But what is very clear is that what we have today and what you are proposing are going to be substandard for the people, irrespective of what it says, irrespective of what the letter and the spirit and what we need to do.
But that's what we have to comply with.
Well, that is what you have to comply with, but it doesn't mean that that's all you have to, that all you can do.
Rich, we're doing an awful lot here. We are proposing some very significant traffic improvements, some that actually are not even related to this development. We are addressing 14 intersections in your township with an adaptive system. 14, 14 intersections, some which have, which our development will have absolutely no impact on. So, we are working with your consultants to provide a laundry list of traffic improvements, because that's what we're trying to do, is make, we are a member of this community. So, having a situation that is a complete disaster is not in anybody's interest. We're trying to do the very best that we can do here.
Dave, we're going to have a complete disaster. This is going to be a disaster. You're going to add 7,500 trips a day, and three or four or five of these intersections, AMPM in 2020 and 2050, are going to continue to be a level of service that's a DE or F. And you all are saying, hey, that's all we needed to do.
We agree on a very fundamental point here. What will be there when we're done, or anybody is done, will be vastly different than what is being generated from this site today, without question. Without question. We know that. You know that. Everybody here knows it. But what we have to do as an applicant, as a member of the community, is try and do our best to help the situation. We're coming. We're coming to this site. We're coming to this site. And I think that, can I just finish? I think that overall, that's a really good thing for this community. Having the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania open up a mixed medical facility here in my township, in your township, I think is a wonderful thing. But we understand there's going to be an impact here. We get it. And we're trying to work to make that impact as de minimis as possible. But there's going to be an impact. And all we can do is step up to the plate when we get a list of traffic improvements and say, "Yep, we're going to do those." And that's what we did. We worked with your consultant. They said this would be a great help for this community. Some things are not related to your project. Will you do it? We said yes. We're doing it. We continue to step up to the plate, and we continue to work with your consultants to give this community the best plan we can. Is it going to be perfect in your eyes and in many people's eyes? I don't know. Other people? I know in yours, it will not be perfect. But we're trying.
Well, objectively, it's substandard on our ordinance. It's not a C level of service. It's not me saying...
But you just said it doesn't matter if we meet the ordinance.
All right, again, we disagree. I hear you saying, "All you need to do is leave it slightly better or the same as it was." And again, I think that the data here is massaged to make it as easy as it can, and it's a lower bar for you to keep it at these levels of service. But even if you disagree with that, the levels of service in these intersections is unacceptable. It's unacceptable, whether you met the spirit, whether you did what you needed to. If you're going to be a neighbor, if your patients are going to be coming through, if we're all going to live here, if we're going to have deliveries, this is not going to be sufficient. This will not be a place where you want to live and work.
Well, I do live here. I do work here, so I disagree with that.
Can I ask, can I just ask one question? So if the issue is that they've complied with the ordinance, is it something that, Commissioner Booker, we look at the ordinance at a later date and try to fix? If that's something, I mean, I feel like...
Certainly, we need to do that.
Can I finish? Do you mind if I finish?
Let me answer the question.
Do you mind if I finish? So is that something, you know, I feel like we're trying to make this applicant, you know, do something that maybe we haven't asked other applicants to do, or, you know, that is not within the spirit of what we already have. And maybe what we have is flawed, but that's maybe something we need to look at in the future. And maybe that's something you can guide us on, and we can look at to correct in the future.
Well, I would relish the opportunity to do that, and I hope that we will do that. And I have some definitive proposals to do that. What I am talking about here is a condition of livability, and that if we are going to add 7,500 trips a day on these roads, that we need to not just leave these roads in the same sorry condition that they are, that we need to mitigate that and to improve it. Otherwise, it's not going to be livable. That's my concern. And again, it sounds like I'm not going to get that. All right, so let's move on. I have some other things to review. So the next item I have is the tax commitment. Now, when we talked about this at our meeting the other day with the Board of Commissioners, the full board, I made the point that we had letters from the community, from Penn, regarding sale/leaseback and the portions of the site. Let me just open these up again. Hold on here. I had them open earlier. The trustees at this time, we have a letter from September 25th. "We'd ask that you advise the board. The trustees are pursuing a sale of the entire property with the intention to lease back only a portion. That said, our commitment to the township remains the same. The trustees will not petition for a tax exemption. Similarly, so long as the trustees operate from the subject property, the trustees commit to paying all applicable taxes. At this time, we are unable to provide specific information to the intended purchaser. Due to the confidential nature, we can advise the board remains in discussions with several developers for the sale. Finalizing of discussions will be contingent of how the property will be developed." So we know how that is at this point. And then the other letter said... Bear with me. The other letter said similarly that there will be, I'm actually looking right when this one's for Kevin, this is Penn Medicine. This one's for Kevin Batchelder, though.
Yeah, he's the superintendent of schools.
But it was on our site. But it says that the trustees are in discussions to sell the subject property to an unrelated for-profit third party and intend to lease a portion of the subject property back for the operation as an ambulatory care facility. Under this structure, the trustees acknowledge the property will remain fully taxable. And then it goes to the second paragraph. "In the event that the trustees do not sell the subject property, or sell the subject property and regain ownership at a later date." So as long as we don't...
What does the rest of that sentence say?
So it says, "In the event the trustees do not sell the subject property, or sell it, or do not sell it and regain ownership."
Right.
Right? So this is my issue with this. It sounds like if you sell it and regain ownership...
Finish reading the sentence, please.
It says, "In the event the trustees do not sell the subject property, or sell the subject property and regain ownership at a later date, the trustees agree not to petition for an exemption." So it sounds like if you sell it and regain possession, that you can petition for exemption.
What it says, no matter what, what it says, very clearly there in a letter...
It's not very clear, but it's legal speak.
You're attempting to read kind of half the sentence. So the second half of the sentence, the other half, is where it says, "No matter what happens in the front half, we're going to commit to pay taxes, not seek an exemption." But beyond that, I think you have in your packet is another commitment, a more formal agreement, an offer from the trustees to you. And the school district has a very similar agreement. Again, we will pay taxes here. We will not seek an exemption. I think the tax issue is completely over now. We've agreed every which way we could possibly agree with you, with the school district. We're going to pay taxes.
The way I read that sentence, the trustees can sell the facility and then reacquire it and then appeal for an exemption. Is that not how it's, that's not how...
It's saying, "If we sell the property and lease it back," that's the first half. "We'll pay taxes."
Or if we do not sell it and regain it.
That's correct. "We'll pay taxes. No matter what, we will pay taxes."
But if you do sell it and regain it, then you can petition for exemption.
No. It says, "As long as we operate," the agreement we've presented, "as long as we operate, whether we own it or we're just operating, we will pay taxes."
So what's the status of the sale/leaseback? Because we've mentioned it in two letters, and now you're saying you're not bothering with that.
But in both letters, we say, "Irrespective of whether we pursue that option, we are going to pay taxes." What we wanted to ensure for the board was, even if it changes ownership hands and we're a less C, we will pay taxes. So we had to give you every possible scenario. We're an owner. We're a less C. An operator. In both those scenarios, I mean, that's really it, right? We either own it or releasing and operating. You can't have any of the other. We're going to pay taxes under both, under the leaseback or under a pure ownership.
Again...
So I think, Rich, I think your question, I think what you're saying is that legally they could seek exemption if it came back to them.
We're saying no.
No, I'm just, but Rich is playing cynic here, okay? So he's, so Peter, is what we have so far, if they were to file for an exemption, is this binding? I mean, is this something we can enforce?
We have a signed agreement from them that was written by my office. And my office is perfectly comfortable with this, and I disagree with what Rich's worries.
Okay.
Well, that's not something to agree or disagree. If that's the case, then that's, I'd like for it to be clarified that if Penn decided to sell the property and then reacquire it at a later date, that that still would...
It is in the agreement.
I don't think it is.
Whether we own or operate, we will not seek an exemption for taxes. Correct, Peter?
I haven't memorized the agreement, but I believe that is correct.
We didn't draft it. We didn't draft it, Rich.
All right. Well, again, I look at that, and I see if you sell it and then reacquire it, that you don't have to adhere to that. So I would ask that you clarify that. And then, again, you can disagree. Rich, you're interpreting. I'm interpreting it how I interpret it.
All right, let's come on. We're two and a half hours in.
So the next issue is, I still think that we need to clean up. You agree not to file for an exemption, but we have no concept of how we're going to do the taxes. And I would ask that we base the assessment only on the construction cost or the replacement cost of the facilities. And that's how we're going to determine the assessment. We'll work with the county to do that.
You can work with the county to come up with the assessment. We answer, we don't come up with our own assessment. We're given an assessment by the county. We have to abide by that assessment or appeal it. But ultimately, it goes to the county. We don't make a determination on that. It's up to somebody that is not Penn-related.
But Dave, it goes to the calculation, so we need to...
But we don't set that, Rich.
But we should agree as the parties on how we're going to value the property, because that's going to drive what the taxes are.
Don't talk to the county. It's not Penn.
No, it is Penn, because Penn has the right to appeal any county assessment.
Every taxable entity has that right.
So once again, you're not going to entertain. So here it is. So this, I mean, every single thing I've raised, Dave has said, "Nope, we're not going to address it." The issue is, we need to, it is fair. We need to agree on how we're going to value the property. And as you know, we value properties based on three different criteria: comparable sales, income capitalization, replacement cost, new, less depreciation. Now, what I'm asking is that we come to some accord on the methodologies by which evaluations will be considered fair between the parties. And we can do that outside of the county.
But you can work with the taxing authority on that. And you guys can come up with any methodology you want to tax us. And then we have to abide by that or appeal it.
Well, I think that we should exclude income capitalization from any type of calculation.
Rich, we don't set that.
No, I'm talking to you, so that's what I want...
No, we're not going to dictate what the county can or cannot do. We aren't the taxing authority.
What you could appeal, that's what I'm dictating. Let's agree on what the appeal would be based on.
Your point's made.
So again, that's another no. Penn documents the nine-acre parcel is not in Greens Grace. That's done.
It's a yes, right?
That's correct. Yep. Tax, the tax covenant needs to be recorded with the deed and must apply to all successors. Is that, that's going to be in there?
We can't bind successors. We can bind our use. And that's what the agreement states, with both you and the school.
That was the, it would travel as inequitable servitude or travel with the land?
No, it's only binding upon the party and related entities.
All right. So here's another instance. If Penn sells the property and moves out, Mainline Health or Jefferson buys it, they will be in, and they will be allowed to appeal for an exemption. Correct? That's correct.
Yeah.
So we could end up with an exempt site at some point in the future. Why not just record it anyway? You can record it in the deed and let them worry about whether it's...
There's actually an agreement with the school district that is recorded.
So why would we not want to do that?
And it says that as long as we operate at the property, we're going to not seek an exemption for taxes.
And that negative covenant would apply to successors?
No, it applies to us, is what it says, the trustees. Or any affiliated entity, actually.
The original concept was it would also apply to successors.
Never. That was never the concept.
I don't think, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we can legally do that, Kim.
No, it would be, I mean, it would be inappropriate, and it makes no, it's illogical. Any property, Mainline Health could come into any property in the township, and any township in the township, and buy it and then apply for the exemption. Why this particular property would, you know, we would bind it and prevent that from happening? And anyone who comes in and applies for an exemption, they have to get the exemption. We obviously would oppose it. We'd obviously force them to prove it. It's been our position here with Penn Med, that Penn Medicine, you know, if they applied for, we would oppose it, and we thought, we had good arguments why they wouldn't get it. So we reached this agreement, it's a signed agreement, it's been signed by the parties, it's been agreed to by the school district. My office is fully supportive of it, but it only applies to Penn Medicine and affiliated entities. And furthermore, if Penn Medicine sells the property to someone else and 10 years later buys it back, it's still in place. They, you know, they can't get out from under it by some sort of shenanigans to that effect.
Well, again, I would doubt that. But in any case, they can, the next person who owned it for those, after that period, they would be able to make this exempt. So everyone should be aware of that.
All right, all right.
If they're exempt entity.
Yeah. But the difference is, in this case, we're not just, it's not just selling an office building. This is a medical facility. It's highly likely a successor would be an exempt entity and would seek an exemption. It's different than any other facility. That's the point. All right. Next item. We would ask Penn to include a deed restriction in the 250 King of Pressure Road to prohibit any medical office, medical practice, or ambulatory care use on that site to any transferee.
Well, I can tell you this. This I am sure of, and I've been told. They're not going to sell it to a competitor. That doesn't help the university at all.
So it should be pretty easy to put a deed restriction in.
I don't know if they're going to deed restrict it, Rich, but they're not going to sell it to a competitor. Doesn't benefit them.
Again, it would provide comfort to the commissioner who's elected for his folks if you would do that.
We're not going to put a deed restriction on the property. We're going to tell you, "We're not going to sell it to a competitor."
All right.
So another no. We also have some other issues, some, well, what I wrote here is 12, widen King of Pressure Road all the way to Septus Drive Way. I think that that is a beneficial change that we really should do. We're going to end up doing that at some point. It'll give extra room. I would really recommend that we get to that. And we have a couple other things. One of the issues that we had worked on in the past was something called the gateway enhancement. So this area is, comes off the Blue Route. It's the entrance to Radnor Township. And I look at the gateway to Radnor Township from Lancaster Avenue at Airedale Road West all the way past Wawa. So we're looking at a gateway enhancement, and we would ask the applicant to entertain partnering with us in facilitating a beautification of that area.
Do you know what area he's talking about, Dave?
So we do.
It's right there off the Blue Route, Route 30.
We do. We've agreed to partner with the township in the beautification of areas that they've identified. We also understand that Villanova University has agreed to partake in that, and the Villanova Center has agreed to partake in that. So we're a member of the community. We've committed that we will partake in that beautification effort.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Again, I'm disappointed that there's been so many flat no's from the applicant.
All right. So thank you, Rich. All right. Yeah, no. Lisa, do you have anything, anything else?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good. I thank you very much for going through all the changes and things that, the improvements that you decided to make. So, no, I think I'm good.
Okay. Anything from the staff? Anything the staff wants to add in? No? Okay. And Matt, Sean, anything?
You can talk right there.
You can turn on that mic, and it works.
Can I get the, just the aerial overview of the site? Just, I just had a couple things pointed out by one of the members of the Planning One of the things that I had, I've been looking at the plan pretty closely for the last couple days, but one of the things someone just pointed out to me, that egress from the site could potentially go on to Raider Road and through the high school campus. Is there any way that we can restrict traffic coming into the campus? Because it's not restricted today.
Crazy to drive over those speed humps.
People do it.
The waste.
As far as I know, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone can drive through Raider I'm suggesting during peak hours, there should be no traffic exiting the 145 King of Pressure Road site going through the high school campus. Seems logical to me.
Makes sense to me. Yeah. I mean, Dave, I think you would agree with that. I mean, Dave, I think you would agree with that.
It sounds like it's not the applicant's issue, though.
So what can we do to help that?
Sure.
Yeah, so we can certainly put up signage.
Okay, yeah. And then to follow on to that, and this might be of comfort to Commissioner Booker. The planning commissioner also suggested during peak hour, taking a right turn out of 145 King of Prussia Road, going right and going toward the bridge at Radnor Chester Road, that's where the bottleneck occurs. And if we're synchronizing the lights, really, the traffic should be forced to go left as you're exiting the site, back to Lancaster where the synchronization occurs to make it a more efficient driving pattern for those employees leaving the site.
So Matt, you know, we're synchronizing all the intersections to the right, too. All the way up to Matson Ford.
I understand that. But the widening of King of Prussia Road is going to probably make the flow a little bit easier coming out to that direction. So I'm not saying you close King of Prussia Road. I'm saying you limit during peak hours, those right turns coming towards the bridge where the bottleneck occurs.
So we can look at that, Matt, for sure. Because we kind of agree, though, and we're encouraging, we're, we can certainly look at it. We agree. We are encouraging our traffic coming out to make a left. We've got two lefts on our plan.
You know what I'm talking about, Dave? Aldwin Lane shuts down between certain hours to keep the bottleneck from happening?
Yep. We can look at that. Yeah, I think that's a good comment.
That's it, Matt? Okay. Sean?
I just have a, just a couple of issues. And I don't want to use Aldwin Lane, but they are dead smack in between the CICD as well as this new, you know, the PLO. So the traffic there for them, I mean, is a nightmare. So when you did do your... So part of my ward is Aldwin Lane. And they are dead smack in between the CICD. Then you have some commerce. And then you have your PLO project. What, you know, I mean, did you take that, the CICD, into consideration when you were doing these traffic patterns? And then what could we do to mitigate that part of town where I think it could just be, you have a, what is that, a six-way intersection there?
I mean, a 30 and 320?
No. No, a 30, yeah, 30 and 320. It's a six-way, it's a six-way intersection.
Where it comes out.
And then you have the Blue Route. So what are we gonna, or, you know, I mean...
Isn't that the intersection that, Bob, that Villanova gave us money for, to do that intersection?
That's correct.
And that was to do lights and, to do the lights and...
That's correct. And that should be synchronized as part of this project. I believe that that's included as part of this with the synchronization that Penn has agreed to participate with. So the hope is that, and I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Villanova picks up to Lowry's Lane, Eithon, I think, correct?
And Church Walk.
And Church Walk.
Or what was Church Walk?
So that will actually help synchronize all the way down further, unless Penn would like to take it all the way down to North Wayne Avenue. But I'm sure that's a little bit of a stretch.
I guess my question is, and thank you for that, is when you guys did your numbers of car, I mean, did that, did the CICD have any kind of impact on what your numbers were or the, I guess, the influx of traffic in that area during peak times? You understand my question, correct?
Traffic counts were done in 15 and 16, which CICD had no impact on those counts.
I don't think there were. And I think the biggest impacts here to this development, I think, nothing, I think, on your ward, is I think more of it is Rich's concerns from King of Prussia Road, heading north up King of Prussia Road as it heads its way up towards Upper Gulf is the biggest concern of that traffic there within the bridge and it heads up. And then the artery roads that actually feed within there, when you talk about Pine Tree, Eagle Road, I think Matt's ward, too, as well as the impact there of traffic trying to circumvent King of Prussia Road. So I think that's where you're looking at that feed because people will try to get off King of Prussia Road and try to navigate through the neighborhoods. And I think we've seen with bridge strikes that Rich speaks about and trucks starting to get off of those roads and navigate through. And I think Matt has seen it in his, before getting on here as well, trucks starting to navigate it through the neighborhoods down towards, actually, North Wayne Avenue, which is, which is part of the problem, too. So I think that's where, this goes back to what Rich's concerns are.
But also, guys, it's actually between our wards because that intersection at northbound ramp to King of, on 476, under the bridge, that's also one of our failing intersections that's pointed out in this traffic study. That's right between the CICD and the PLO area. That's going to be a big, big bottleneck as well.
And I think that's what, and I agree with Sean that that's one of his areas.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just, sorry to interrupt. I just see it as, you know, going from east to west as you try to merge onto the Blue Route, peak hours, rush hour, you have the school, you have the CICD, and you have a terrible, I mean, I mean, hopefully Villanova will say what, you know, they'll do what they say. But it's just, the backup is just terrible. And then from your standpoint, the only other way to cut around would be, say, Conestoga Road. And then you have these narrow, narrow through streets like Eithon, et cetera. Again, and then you have the, what is that, Radnor Chester? That's windy and it backs up. And there's a terrible, what is it, a left, a right-hand turn, because there's that building that's like right in front of the gas station there. So I'm just wondering, no, I know the CICD is not built. I know that the PLO is not built. But it will be one, and these two cosmic forces, so to speak, the two biggest developments in Radnor are literally a stone's throw away from each other. What has, and I will ask this to Villanova, but what has Penn Medicine, you know, what are you going to do to mitigate that traffic, so to speak?
So we don't have any idea what Villanova's doing. But so let me read the intersections to you that we're, we're working on and our improvements. Route 30 and I-476 northbound ramps. Route 30 and I-476 King of Prussia Road. Route 30 and I-476 southbound. Route 30 and Radnor Chester. Route 30 and Radnor Financial Center Eastern driveway. Route 30 and Radnor Financial Center Western driveway. King of Prussia Road and Radnor Chester Road. King of Prussia Road and Matson Ford Road. Matson Ford Road and South Centennial. Matson Ford Road and North Centennial. King of Prussia Road and Raider Road. Radnor Chester Road and Raider Road. Radnor Chester and Radnor Financial Center. So those are the intersections, Sean, that we are, we're looking at. So it's a pretty wide net. We don't know, we think we're walking up to and touching where Villanova's supposed to step in. That's as we understand it.
In general, I'm a big proponent of what you guys are doing. I, you know, I mean, it doesn't help your cause to make traffic terrible so no one wants to go to your...
That's right.
I mean, people say, the traffic is terrible there. I'd rather go to another facility. No, it doesn't help your cause. I get that. I understand about business, you know. But I just, again, the traffic is terrible to begin with. It's not going to get any better. These houses are old, the streets are narrow, and it's just more and more wear and tear on our, on our resources. And that's my...
Well, can I just, can I just ask him, because I wasn't on the board when they approved the CICD, did you do traffic studies around the CICD? Was there, was that all done? I mean, do we have a sense of what that already looks like?
There were traffic studies that were done around that area. Steve, I'm going to let you go into the details about that. There were studies that were done, the coordination that has to be done here between the two projects. But again, too, you had Biomed with a mega project that, again, started out at a million square feet that the board got down, but then there was a transfer of this. So I think the major part of what needs to be done, which the board is looking at here is the signals starting to talk to each other. Because right now, the signals don't talk to each other. So they're, each one, independent brains of each one that don't talk and communicate, which that's why traffic gets stacked up. So that's one of the issues of the police, the staff traffic looking at. We need to move traffic more efficiently through the township, which we don't right now. So that's one of the things that are being looked at here. So Steve, I'll let you talk about the CICD and their traffic study.
So through that traffic study, so from the very beginning, our consultant, Amy Kaminsky, you know, through our ordinance, required the applicant to provide a traffic impact study that addressed a certain things. Staff got together and that's the Radnor Police Staff Traffic, myself, staff got together, the manager, the system manager. And we also came up with a list of intersections that had to be studied in that area, which they complied with. And from those studies is how the configuration of the road was determined at Eithon and 30, what, you know, there's an additional lane. The same thing for the east approach of 30. So those traffic studies all followed what every applicant has to follow. And basically, the outcome of that is the turn lanes, the length of the turn lanes, the queues, just like in here. And Villanova, as part of that, did agree to pay a certain amount of money towards traffic adaptive systems for the intersections the manager noted, Lowry's, Eithon, and Church Walk. So the gap is 320, Sproul Road and Villanova Center. But that, there was a traffic study done, there was many, a meeting that we discussed that with the residents. And, I mean, we could get into details on that, but that's, that's the basic gist. They had to do a traffic impact study. Amy was our lead consultant on all that. We had them install a rapid flashing beacon for the students that cross Eithon Avenue. There was a lot that came out of that and a lot of input from our police department.
Just one more time, when you look at the traffic study from Penn, they've addressed this exact intersection at I-476 northbound on pages 44 and 48, in both 2020 and 2025 in the PM condition, it's an E level of service at the projection, and it will be an E level of service at that point when they get done all of their mitigation. It's well below our standards and it is, we are planning for failure. A plan, a failing to plan is a plan to fail. It's going to be a failing and a tremendously detrimental intersection, and we really should address it now.
All right. If there's no more staff comment or commissioner comment, we'll open it up to public comment.
Hi, good evening. Sarah Armstrong, Radnor resident. Thank you for all doing your jobs, and you're all doing a good job doing your jobs. I've lived in Radnor and actually just off of King of Prussia Road about 40 years, pretty much my whole life. And so I've seen a lot of this development and a lot of the change. So I wanted to say just a couple of quick comments. I do agree, Rich, that we should get an updated traffic study. I do think in our particular case, three years is too old. And to make you feel better about spending the money to do it, in the last couple of years, the King of Prussia Town Center has been built, which now you can't even get a parking spot down there, okay? And in the last couple of years, the SEPTA R5 has instituted a direct line from Radnor to Philly in the morning. And so I have friends that drive to Radnor in the morning on King of Prussia Road from Pottstown to pick up the train. So we have a lot more traffic just because of these kind of ancillary things that are happening. So I picked up a couple of numbers as everyone was speaking. So it sounds like we're getting 1,850 parking spots, and we are anticipating 7,500 trips a day. So it looks like, you know, on average, the spots are going to turn over four times a day. 25% of that traffic is going to come from the north on King of Prussia Road. 75% is coming from Route 30. The other 25%, roughly, will be coming from Cabrini College area. Okay, so if we get, so 25% of 7,500 is 1,875 trips per day on our section of King of Prussia Road. Just saying, an average car length of 10 feet for a car, you get Suburbans, you get Minis, but let's use 10 feet, that's 18,750 feet of cars. At 5,280 feet per mile, that's 3.5 miles of cars stacked up. This is what I do for a living. I do math for a living. So I just want to give everyone a visual, okay? That's three and a half miles of cars. And unfortunately for Penn, I feel like, you know, I'm a big property rights person. They have property rights, I have property rights. But the reality is, we're dealing with a really tough situation on King of Prussia Road. Right now, at 4:30 to 5 o'clock, if you try to get to the Radnor R5 train station, you can be backed up to Karen Lane, which is way outside of our township, all the way down towards the King of Prussia Mall. So I have some real serious concerns about that. Three and a half miles of cars end to end every day on King of Prussia Road is a real visual everybody should be thinking about, okay? And then the other difficulty, because of the current traffic that we have on King of Prussia Road, is what happens is during the peak hours, and I do believe a lot of this is coming out of King of Prussia, they've had tremendous growth over the 10 years that we have had Wyeth, now Penn Medicine, empty. King of Prussia has boomed. And you see more and more of it. Now, they're building condos and apartments and everything at the King of Prussia Town Center. So those folks are weaving their way up to the Blue Route through Radnor on King of Prussia Road. So what happens is, though, now, on the peak times, everybody's frustrated because they're stuck on King of Prussia Road. So they start peeling left and right onto the side arteries. And so there's a high volume of traffic coming through the side streets. And they are driving at high rates of speed because they're frustrated that they're late and they're sitting there in traffic. So we have people cutting through at, you know, at really significant high rates of speed. So I think maybe some of that we can address through signage, local traffic only. I'm looking for creative solutions. I, you know, I think that, that it's an interesting plan and, you know, we try to be very good neighbors to the institutions in the community. We do expect the institutions in the community to be good neighbors to us. Many of us have been here a long time and plan to stay. So we would like to have a good relationship. So I think some creative solutions are in order. You know, maybe Penn Medicine could have encouraged their customers to come on the R5. They could have a shuttle. They could maybe give, get discount tickets to ride SEPTA. You know, I'm looking, I had talked to Luke about the slip ramp. I'm looking for creative solutions to what is, in actuality, a very difficult problem in our community. So thank you so much. Yes.
We had one...
Thank you, Sarah.
One neighborhood in North Jersey, which has designated all of their side streets as private roads so that they are no longer on ways. And that would mean making all of our streets private, but that's creative.
Austin Hepburn, Upper Gulf Road, Radnor. I live not too far away from this planned development. And I, I see what the traffic situation's like every day, and I have a creative, I have a creative solution. And I understand from the counselor for the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania that they want to be a good neighbor and they want to get along with us. And I welcome that. And I, I suggest that you cut this development in half. Cut it down in half. Be a good neighbor. The problem is, our infrastructure cannot handle the density that you're proposing. We just can't handle it. Now, there are many of us who are going to benefit in other ways. There's plenty of money flowing around this gigantic disaster. But for residents like me who have no money coming to me through this project, my quality of life is going to go down. Okay? I realize there's a lot of prestige in having the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania Penn Medicine Ambulatory Care Facility in my neighborhood. Lot of prestige, but I'm sorry. It adds nothing to the quality of my life. The quality of my life is pollution. I can't believe the school board is so enthused about this. 7,500 cars idling in gridlock. And all that pollution wafting over the playing fields of Radnor High School where our children are huffing and puffing makes no sense. It's, there's no common sense, okay? Our roads can't handle 7,500 trips. And finally, someone brought up the sewer system, okay? Radnor has a terrible history with their sewer system. A previous township manager didn't use the funds in the account to modernize the pipes to fix it. He spent it on himself and his friends. We have a terrible sewer system that is at capacity when it rains, okay? From my understanding, it's at 98% capacity when it rains, okay? This sewer system goes down Darby Creek. We have a lot of residents that live... We have a lot of residents that live on Darby Creek. So what happens when Penn Medicine comes in and builds this gigantic, unbelievable ambulatory care facility, and toilets are flushing, and drains are running, and, you know, they're preparing food, and water's going down the pipes, and it rains, and we go from that 98% capacity to 110%? What happens, okay? The manhole covers all through Darby Creek wind up floating because all that raw sewage is coming out. It's going to happen. Oh, but you guys have a permit. It's based on Wyeth in 1960, okay? How can you, how can that legally stand today in 2018? Back in, there may have been plenty of capacity back in 1960, 1970. It's been used up. We've allowed our infrastructure to deteriorate, so that every time it rains, water is going into this sewer system, and we're at capacity. We have a moratorium on development. There's a 21-unit development on, in St. David's. It was stopped because there was no sewer capacity. There were already, I'm sure there were at least 15 units already on the property. Developer wanted to put in 21, can't do it, don't have the capacity. Yet Penn Medicine seems to get away with everything. They can do whatever they want. They're going to hook up. There's a site that hasn't put much sewage down the pipe in 10 years. And all of a sudden, we're going to get an enormous amount. Okay, so you have a permit, so you're legal. But what does that do for Darby Creek? So I think before we even consider voting on this, dear commissioners, make sure that we're not going to create an environmental disaster in Darby Creek, okay? We haven't dealt with this. We haven't even looked at it. But of course, we're rushing, we're rushing 100 miles an hour, okay? No one, we're rushing 100 miles an hour to get an approval for this, because Penn Medicine might leave, they might sell the property, they might back out. We haven't even dealt with this sewer problem, okay? So I think we're rushing into something that's beyond our imagination in how many things can go wrong. But I still leave it on the table. If you want to cut it in half, I think I could support you guys. Cut it in half and be a good neighbor. But make sure that sewer problem isn't going to result in raw sewage coming up out of those manholes in Darby Creek and creating an environmental disaster. And I know that the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania will never come to Radnor. They will never experience raw sewage running down Darby Creek. They will never feel guilty about it. And maybe two years from now, or four years from now, when it happens, no one will even blame Penn Medicine. But I think common sense tells us that if we're at capacity during rainstorms, and we're going to bring this big facility online, we can't handle it. So, please, let's think before we rush into something. Thank you.
Thanks, Austin.
Hi, I'm Danielle DiRice. Yes, I live on Pine Tree Road.
Hi.
How are you? It's, it's tough to follow two such great speakers. I agree with both of their comments. I don't think, because of many of you are not in the medical field, I don't think you understand the impact of how many cars per 10 minutes will be driving on Lancaster, King of Prussia Road, all of those things. So just a little quick math. One doctor sees four to six patients per hour. So if there's 20 doctors, which there's going to be a lot more, if there's 20 doctors, that's 80 to 120 patients per given hour. Then multiply that for an eight-hour day with a one-hour lunch break, that's 560 to 840 patients in just one day. And multiply that, that's only 20 doctors. We're, I mean, it's going to be a lot more than just that. That's a huge number that's going to fill in the King of Prussia Road and all the side streets. So I really think we need to think about that. The speed on Pine Tree Road and the traffic is incredible. It's been, luckily, a lot of you are new faces, so you won't seize when I mention Pine Tree Road. But if you asked the commissioners from, you know, last year and the year before, there's major issues, and Pine Tree Road isn't being addressed. The intersection isn't even one of the 14. I also think it's just worth mentioning that it's interesting that the school board is in such favor of Penn Medicine. There's a potential conflict of interest that a previous member is the, is a counselor, and the school board is in favor. It just needs to be said. So I just think we really need to think clearly about what we're doing to our community and where our kids go to school.
Thank you.
She makes a very good point. Your planning commission, when it drafted and approved this ordinance, and Commissioner Curley dealt with exactly with what Danielle just brought up, the numbers she was talking about are pure medical office, and it is absolutely the worst traffic generator you can have. So what they did was cap medical office on this property and push the development towards ambulatory care facilities, which if you kind of followed earlier, it's based on patient position. So that's absolutely the concern. Limit the amount of medical office, which is that constant turnover at very high volume. Push it towards larger spaces, less patient positions. That's in the traffic study, by the way.
Thanks, Steve.
Will that be in the deed, then?
It's actually in your ordinance. It's in your ordinance. There's a cap on medical office.
On the conditions?
Percent of your buildings that can be used for medical office, yes. That was one of the concerns the planning commission had and the commissioners when they approved it. You couldn't have too much medical because it threw the traffic. So you had to cap it and push it towards ambulatory care, you know, the outpatient surgical centers. So that's why we had to submit floor plans, to say, this is how our building is going to be used. And the only thing we could do at that point would be move more, towards more ambulatory care. We couldn't put more medical office in. So that was one of their concerns. It's a good one. Yeah, so thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks, Steve.
Chip Layfield, Wayne. Just a quick kind of clarification from the peanut gallery back there. We had a discussion on the waiver that they're no longer seeking on the intersections. And first, people were jubilant that these intersections were going to get fixed. But my reading, it seems like King of Prussia, all these, these different intersections, it's really, they're just identifying the problem. Are they actually going to fix these intersections and bring them up to a C? Or are they simply identifying the problem here?
My understanding is they're required to identify the problem and possible future solutions. That's my understanding. As it stands right now.
And part of what I was pointing out is that it's not clear. The documentation that we have right now is inconsistent. It appears that they, they believe they've identified it, and that's all they need to do, and they are going to retain, as I stated repeatedly, these failing intersections will be part of the final plan, and that is what our plan is, to have failing intersections at 30 to 40% of these, these 10 study areas.
Well, that's pretty disappointing, because I think half the people thought that these were all going to be addressed, and apparently, they're not. I'd like to join with Sarah, and thank you for doing your jobs. I think it's great, and it's nice you're doing it publicly, unlike the other night. Everybody's here finally. It's not hard to do the people's work in front of the people. I really recommend you do it, particularly now, the board's changed directions. We have a Republican majority. Hopefully, we get a good government going here. And Rich Booker gets a lot of heat, but I got to tell you, in my ears, I've never seen a commissioner that's done the due diligence on a project, really digging into the details and pushing back. And I think he's done a phenomenal job for the township, for us, and for the board, and sets a very high standards for the rest of the commissioners, because the rubber stamping and smiley faces, it's just not cutting it anymore. He sets a very high standard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chip.
Evening. Nick Canelli representing the school district. Couple questions that we have. One, our understanding was that Penn was constructing a bike path in addition to the sidewalk, or it was going to be a bike path as opposed to a sidewalk through the property? Where that sidewalk's located, that's not a bike path? I thought, I thought when we spoke the other evening, that was going to be a bike path, because the reason for that, of course, as you know, right now, part of the bike path is going through the school district property, which will require taking down trees and cutting into that slope there. So that was our understanding, this would take the place of that bike path through the school district property.
What we've committed to is this portion here, Nick, which kind of pulls it off of this side of the school district. We've said that we are willing to design this to meet the township trail requirement. So it's an ADA accessible path, sidewalk, but we agree to work with the township. If they want to, if they want to remove from their ultimate trail design, this area of the trail, and push it to our property, we would be willing to accept that.
Okay, and Steve, I guess I'll turn to you on that one-
Yes.
...because that is very important to the school district, that that can be accomplished.
We had discussed this a little bit earlier. So we did bring this up to our consultant, and we provided the 145 property plans to them. So after discussions with them, the grant is based on the current layout that was proposed, that was presented to the school facilities committee. So they're going to move forward on the existing, the approved layout, if you will, from our original plan, and concurrently look to see if we can use the Penn Medicine site. So there's several grant agencies involved in this with the, with the tap trail. So we have to make sure that what we do doesn't violate any of the terms of the grant. So they're going to move concurrently. They're going to move to get approved, if possible, the existing proposed tap trail, and they are also directed that they have to investigate the use of that, what's up on the screen, the 145 Penn Med sidewalk trail path for, if we could use it in lieu of. And there are different design standards, so the, the tap trail falls under a different design standard, it's a much wider one. So they have work to do to determine, you know, would this be in lieu of? How would it affect the grant? Would the grant be reduced? Would the grant be lost? So they're, they're going to move forward in both directions. But we are going to proceed with the tap trail as originally proposed while I investigate the possible use of this. But I don't have an answer, Mr. Canelli, as far as whether that can replace what's on the school. That was the, the very first thought, because at the facilities committee meeting, we heard the facilities committee concerned about the trees. We've all sat on that hill and watched games over the years. You know, we understand the importance of that. So our consultants looking to address their concerns right off the bat, and it is a dual process.
So our understanding is that Penn would be willing if, if that was accepted to, okay. Second item, we know that Penn has extended the northbound left turn lane coming into Raider Road. We also talked, and I, I don't know, Amy, if we discussed this or not, about the southbound left turn lane into the Penn site, about extending that as well. And I know Penn has discussed it, perhaps that is a possibility. We feel, remember, we do have our bus depot right in that area, and that if we can, extending that left turn lane into the site going southbound would be advantageous. Turn to Jim.
Yes, we have a good understanding of the lefts into our site. What we don't yet have is a good understanding of the turns into the bus depot. So that space in between, we can put back-to-back lefts. How that, where that line is drawn, we're not sure yet.
Okay, so-
We want to make it as big as possible. So yes, it'll be as, as long as possible, but we don't want to make it so long that it impedes the lefts into the bus depot.
Okay. And the other thing that kind of goes hand in hand with that, and we know that Penn nor the township may have any control over this, is left turn arrows. As everyone knows, we have 16 and 17-year-old drivers here, and having left turn arrows at those left turn lanes would be very advantageous as far as being able to gain access to Raider Road. So we would hope that the township and Penn would work together with the school district, with perhaps attempting to achieve that from PennDOT.
So absolutely, we told the school district this, we'll say it again here, we will install all of the infrastructure there, so that if it does get warranted by PennDOT, they'll install an arrow, and any assistance we can be in helping to facilitate that, we will do. But what we can do at this point is make sure the infrastructure is there that can support the arrow. We'll do that, we'll install it, and we'll help that, you know, in any, to any extent we can, to help the arrow get implemented. But we'll do everything within our power, both in the install and in the, I guess, the petition phase.
And was mentioned this evening, which kind of caught our attention by Matt, when he brought up about restricting movements into Raider Road from across the site, from the Penn site during rush hour. And I guess we'll have to turn the township on that one. Would signage be appropriate? We, you know, I guess I would look at Amy also to see what Amy's thoughts are on attempts to restrict that. And I believe also that could be enforceable by the police if there was no turn, if there was a prevention from making that, that area into the site, at least during rush hour times. And Amy, does that sound feasible? Is that, you think it's a good-
Yeah, you're talking about restricting movements to cross over-
To cross over.
-King of Prussia and enter this site.
Yeah, because if-
Yeah, I don't think that that would be a-
Traffic is backed up, we can see people trying to avoid it by getting, now, granted, we have speed humps there and-
That's not a problem.
And everything else. I don't know how-
It is, it's very circuitous, and you do have a lot of speed humps. So I have traversed it just to get a sense of what's going on between there. And I agree, it's not the best way to get to and from, but yes.
But it is something that perhaps signage and enforceability could-
Yes, it could be signage on that approach. It could be done before even entering the Raider Road over on Radnor Chester to, so you don't even get those stray motorists that think it's, you know, something that's going to be beneficial, because that's what you want to do, is keep them from coming through that site.
Yeah, no through-traffic type signage.
Nick, just make sure you use the mic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Finally, I, I know that they mentioned about a bus shelter there at, at the R100 driveway in. And it was mentioned the other evening when Penn did the presentation to the facilities committee of the school district about doing something to spruce up that R100 stop there in Radnor. Right now is pretty dull, it's not attractive, and it's probably not attractive to people coming in. And again, as everyone's kind of mentioned here, how do we get people to use public transportation? One iteration of this, of the, of the PLO ordinance had incentives for vouchers and things of that nature. I know it's no longer in this ordinance. And we're wondering also if there should be, could be some kind of joint venture between Penn and SEPTA to kind of attempt to spruce up that, that station there, to maybe make it more attractive for commuters to come in that way. You know, every, we all know about the millennials now who want to live in the city and commute out here by public transportation, and we're thinking that perhaps the more attractive that the, the stops are made, the better it would be to attract people to use, use public transportation. So I don't know if there's something that can be done, if someone from SEPTA can be contacted to ask if something could be done. I know there's a whole system going along with the Norristown High Speed Line, but again, you know, perhaps something can be looked into in that regard. Okay, and those are comments right now.
Good ideas. Thank you, Nick.
I really like the shuttle, Sarah's shuttle idea, like for, I think, people coming on the R5, and I don't know, I like that idea.
So we had, we had mentioned, I think, we, we do utilize shuttles at some of our facilities. So they have to be built, but then we evaluate them. But it's something that Penn does, they do incentivize public transportation ridership. We are improving the driveway at the traffic consultant's recommendation, back to the parking lot, improving the parking lot for the R100. So anything on our property or within our power, we are doing to try and incentivize that movement. Yeah.
Thanks, Dave. All right, is there a-
Can I just ask one more question? I'm sorry. So signage, is that something that comes forward at a later date, or like when you come with, I guess, the renderings and things like that? I'm just wondering, are you considering, you know, what the signage might look like, not, maybe not as much as King of Prussia Road, but you know, both those parking lots or the parking structures are going to back up to 476, so?
So your ordinance is actually very restrictive on building signage, and so we have to comply with that. If we decide we don't want to comply, we're going to have to seek a variance from the zoning board. Yeah, so very restrictive ordinance on signage. And height, and size, and lighting, all that.
One, one other item, Matt might be your question. We were going to talk about the-
Yeah, so very restrictive ordinance on signage, and height, and size, and lighting, all that.
One other item, Matt might be your question. We were going to talk about the approval process for the set, for the office and the hotel, and that's got to come before the board again?
Well, let's be clear about what we're calling it. It's not the left side of the site, it's Phase 2. Can we start calling that other side of the site something?
Well, Phase 2, we can call, we can call our side Phase 1, and the hotel, 150,000-square-foot office, and second parking facility, Phase 2. And what we had said, and I had actually spoken with your solicitor and asked him to draft a condition of approval, that although our plan is being approved, Phase 2 would need to come back through the township for the full land development process, not just kind of come back in to show, they would have to come back in, they'd go to both planning commissions, they'd make recommendations, they'd come back before this board for a final approval. So we would accept the condition that said that.
Dave, that's not to make this onerous on the applicant, it's that...
It's good planning.
It's very good, there's a very good probability that the uses within the PLO and some of the ordinance may change going forward, and we just want to make sure it's consistent with the other six properties.
It's good planning, in our opinion, so that's why we think it's a good condition. Absolutely.
All right, thanks, Dave. All right. Any other public comment? Any commissioner, any further commissioner staff comment?
Baron, Steve Sloughs.
All right. All right, well, again, I want to thank Lisa and Rich for joining us. Matt and Sean was here for a little while, the staff, the Penn personnel, thank you very much, and of course, the public for coming out and watching this and participating as well as the school district, so thank you, everybody.
Move, we adjourn.
I think we made some progress, and at this point, I'll move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.